Okay, good evening. It is 6:01. I am going to call the city council meeting to order. Will you all please rise to say the pledge of allegiance with us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Roll call. Councilman Loy.
Here.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilwoman Henderson.
Here.
Councilwoman Cox.
Present.
Councilwoman Burns.
Present.
And Councilwoman Lavaca.
Present.
Thank you. Looking for approval of the agenda, item D. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make an appr- uh, motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Lavaca, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item E, consent agenda, items one through five, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you.
I'll s- I- I have a question on the check register. Should I pull that out or just get it answered now?
Let's get it answered now if possible. Yeah, so Kelly, I believe Councilman Cox has a question?
Yeah, it's on 10/23 in the check register. I saw that there was $21,518 for a prison- prisoner medical. And I was just curious, does the city pay for medical, uh, for prisoners in the county jail? Why doesn't the county do that?
For our prisoners. It's part of our inner local agreement with Skagit County that we pay for our prisoner medical.
Okay. All right, thank you. I just wondered about that.
Okay. Um, so we have a motion on the table. It was made by Councilwoman Burns and seconded by Councilwoman Kestie. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, thank you. Motion carries. Okay, tonight, tonight we have three guests. We're gonna have three presentations. Up first is Family Promise. So Audra, I believe. Welcome, Audra.
So I submitted a proposal for you all. I hope you all receive that.
Sorry to interrupt, but can you turn on the mic at the podium?
Oh, yes. Does that work? Awesome. Okay, so I sent everything in ahead of time. We focused on three areas for our proposal based on the conversations that we had three weeks ago and some of the areas that I know some of the council members are interested in. The first, uh, and I- I did some research ahead of time too to see what other cities were giving in this range. What seemed a little high in our city was about the average range that other cities were giving, so. We started with $47,000 for our homeless prevention funding. The goal with this was to continue to serve at least 17 families from the Cedar Woolley residents. And then we went with $45,000 for our shelter funding. Currently, when I went in and dug into the data, I found that Cedar Woolley residents that are entering into our shelter programs are actually staying longer than residents of any other cities. And I believe that's because we- it takes us longer to find housing in this city. And most of our residents don't want to move to Mount Vernon. They don't wanna move to Burlington or another area. And their kids are rooted in these school districts. So we went and had and added some shelter funding in there because we want to be able to focus more on our, specifically on Cedar Woolley residents. Uh, and then finally, we added $12,000 for our seasonal shelter that will be opening soon. We came in a little bit under budget for opening and we have found one private donor that will give to this. And, um, we're still short a little bit to be able to serve direct client services and transportation needs. Throughout this whole proposal, aside from this seasonal shelter, our goal is really to be continuing to focus on growing our- our impact right here in Cedar Woolley, reaching our own residents. Um, we know that our program serves all of Skagit County, but I know that that's something that you guys wanna be focused on and also something we're interested in focusing on. So in total, for our- our request, we are hoping to serve a minimum of 37 families with, uh... Sorry. No, I don't know where that page is. 135 individuals that are Cedar Woolley residents. So, yeah.
Are there any questions for Audra?
I just, I- I had one. Um, in that, thank you very much too. Very well put together and, um...
I wasn't even sure what to share really because I felt like I put it all in the proposal, so.
Yeah, yeah, I know. And it's short and sweet. Definitely always appreciated. Um, bullet point three on page 36, you put down partnering funding with us will ensure a high success rate of outcome, right?
Correct.
And you're projecting a 78% success rate in housing and 86% success rate in homeless prevention. Can you touch on that a little bit and where those numbers came from?
Yes. So, um, in 2023, our housing success rate was 80% success to permanent housing across all of our housing programs. It does go a little bit lower into our seasonal shelter as we're not getting as many housing, straight out into permanent housing, and more of them are moving up. Um, yeah.
If I may, I just have one more question.
Go ahead. Yes.
Um, for number one, the homeless prevention at 47,000 for 17 residents, is that, um, is that a one-time deal? Not one time, but like that year, basically it equates to like, what, $3,000 per one or around that number? And that would prevent homelessness for that family or that resident?
Yes. So on average, uh, when I was doing these numbers, it does cost us on average between 1500 to 1800 to keep a family housed. But we do provide case management as well. We have several cases where they're one and done, where we just write them a check and that's all they really need. Um, they already have full-time jobs. They just fell into illness or something came up. But many times, uh, we will come alongside them for a couple months if needed, just doing check-ins, seeing, can we- can we connect you to other resources? Is there any way that, do you just not have any family support? Can we be there for you to mentor you into a better budget, those kind of things?
And last question, do you have an idea or general idea, what does it cost to take somebody who's now homeless and bring them into a situation where they're self-sustaining? What's the difference in that, that average 3,000 per- per resident versus what it would cost if we didn't prevent that homelessness?
Yeah, the stats about two years ago was about, I think, $35,000 to $37,000 to take somebody, um, an individual who was homeless into housing. And then on average, I- I wanna say that we come in around the 20,000 if they go through all of our programming. I'd have to check on those numbers for sure, though.
I just want to check, I see that, Councilwoman Loy, do you have a question, Councilwoman Loy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, you mentioned schools, and I know there's a program where the schools haul homeless kids all over the county. How do you do it here and what's, how's that work?
Yeah, so we're partnered, uh, both locally and across the nation with school programs. And so they have, uh, even though we have different contracts with the county, we also give first priority to school children. So their counselors will often call in, um, and we'll do, once they're into our shelter, we'll work with the McKinney-Vento program. I think that's what you're referring to, to make sure that they're bussed back to their schools of- of where they became homeless.
Do you know what the name of that program is that the state does that with?
McKinney-Vento.
There you go.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you. Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Cox.
Um, do you guys also do any work helping folks facing eviction? Because if they're like a one month or two behind, maybe they're in a good place, or is that more legal and, you know, go there?
Yes, that is our homeless prevention funding that I put forth for some funding for. Uh, we do a couple different things, as I mentioned earlier. Sometimes they just need a one-time check. Every time we do those, we always call their landlord and have a conversation with them to see, hey, is this somebody you wanna continue renting to? Is there something that we can help with mediation here? Um, sometimes, uh, we get cases more frequently since the pandemic that people are like six months behind, which is a little bit more than we can typically handle within our $2,000 limit. So we will work with other resources and legal advisors to see if we can't make an agreement to get a payment arrangement or if there is eviction that is, we can't- we can't get over the eviction, then we immediately get them into our waitlist to enter into our shelter.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Burns.
Um, timeline for these numbers, the homeless prevention, is that for all of 2025?
Yeah, I- I just did a one-year shot. I pulled the numbers, uh, from our 2023. And so I believe with- with specific funding from the city, we could probably, probably double that number.
And that would be the same for the seasonal shelter going through?
Seasonal shelter would end, uh, at the end of March.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't be accounting for next winter?
No, just- just this one.
Okay. Um, and then the- the shelter services that is separated out, um, is that something that you're already doing? Or is it gonna be in addition to the people you're already helping?
For the shelter?
For the shelter services, the $45,000 request?
Yes. So this will go to families that we're already serving. Uh, what we're looking to do, that this would impact would being able to serve families quicker. Right now, we don't have a lot of direct client service funds. So when families come in and they don't have a vehicle to get them to work, or they do- they need work clothes, or, you know, different things that are needed, we would be able to come in quicker and serve them with this direct client service funds. In addition, I'm, uh, some of these funds will get me 10 extra hours on top of the case management that I already have so that we can serve quicker in that capacity as well.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you so much. Thank you for coming in tonight. Okay. All right, up next is Family Promise. Not Family Promise, I'm sorry, Helping Hands. Hi, Becky.
Hi. See if it fits. Um, so we took this approach as like doing some of the work that we're already seeing the gap for and the need for and how to fill in the gap here in Cedar Woolley. So we, this is the 1590 funding request. Um, the problem that we think this funding will help solve is keeping people in their homes. Um, as we talked at the meeting, it was really about, um, keeping people in their homes during this really tough, this tough season in the winter and making sure that we're working with them to either help them move forward in that, and it's not just a Band-Aid. It's not just paying their rent, but it's also working through budgets and lowering their utilities, maybe getting them roommates, whatever the goal would there would be. Increasing the public health and safety of keeping people warm and out of the weather, reduce gaps in current assistance programs. There's not enough money, um, in the county to cover everybody. So this funding will help us really focus here in Cedar Woolley and help us spend other funding just outside of Cedar Woolley and where we cover, and getting people off the streets using hotel vouchers, monthly room rentals, full hookup RV spots, and some more kind of ideas as things come, um, to us. Um, our approach to working with individuals is really is finding the need, finding the gap, and- and how we can help. We take that kind of holistic view. The team really sits down with people and says, what is the need? Um, not always is the need is to keep them in their home if they're spending way too much money on rent, but then maybe, um, getting on them- them on some waiting list or finding a different approach to that. Uh, so we really look at the whole person and the problem that, um, they have, and we try to find those creative ways of helping them. Some of the partners we work with is Family Promise and the Skagit County Sheriff's Office. Today, we helped someone get into Martha's Place with the Sheriff's Department because nobody had funding for a really small thing that they needed. Uh, Volunteers of America, Veterans Service Officer now comes out to the building. Um, and then the Cedar Woolley Police and Fire Department says they are finding people that need those help. Um, year-to-date, our solutions team has seen 114 people. It says from Cedar Woolley residents for resources. I think that's a lot of, we might see them more than one time. Um, I did not ask if that's a duplicated number. 1,100 individuals served with resources, and that's across, that's not just Cedar Woolley, but it is here in Cedar Woolley in our building. 131 Cedar Woolley residents currently rolled in the coordinated entry. That came from BOA. So I kinda wanted to give you an idea of, there are 131 Cedar Woolley residents that are saying that we're unhoused. Um, so we can kinda see where that need is, so where this funding is going to really help these people get off the streets in the wintertime. And I asked them, what's the waiting list for getting off coordinated entry? So that means that the person is in housing and they don't need to be on that list anymore. It takes 262 days to get people off coordinated entry. So this funding will be that quick, kind of flexible funding that we can get people moving off there into something more stable. Yeah, it might be temporary, but it gives case managers and resources time to really find where they belong and where they wanna go. Um, participants assistance needed in the past, so I kinda wanted to show you guys a little bit about like what we've seen in the past and some of the things we might be able to resolve using this funding. Is, um, a lot of people need a low restriction funding, so it's like, um, nobody's paying for application fees for a new apartment. Nobody pays for that. But yet, if you have no income, how are you supposed to even, every apartment wants you to fill one out, one of those out. So it's, um, some of this funding can help move people. One of our veterans had a, um, they found an apartment. They didn't have the $50 to fill out the application, and they would've lost the apartment the next day if we didn't do it. And we went in there and got it paid, and they were in that apartment over the weekend. So that's, this kind of funding can really push that into like making quick decisions and getting people off the street. Short-term winter housing assistance. People can't live on the street. I mean, it's been 10, 10 degrees one time when we were doing outreach, and I don't, I couldn't stay out very long because of my medical conditions, and it's just, it's so hard on the street when it's so cold. Uh, short-term rental assistance, flexible funding for unique situations. I didn't know that if your dog, uh, doesn't have its shots, you can't go into a shelter. So we always get those calls. This person cannot be housed without this $50 shot, and nobody has funding for that. So having that flexibility to get people housed quickly for really cheap, um, it just, it's right. Tires and batteries to move RVs and vehicles, one of the thoughts we, you know, we may not have enough housing, but is there spaces for RVs to hook up to full services in the wintertime? And they have to be movable, and they have to have good tires, and kind of thinking through that process. Because we can't, we're not obviously not building housing in the next six months. Safe and secure places for people to stay while working with case workers for other assistance programs. When people are in programs, they need a place to be so that they can work through the program. So those are what people have asked us, and we've seen that need. Cost comparisons, average cost per year for someone who's chronically homeless is $35,000. Um, I would have to ask the person that put the screen together where he got that information, if you wanna know that. Average assistant request to keep someone housed is only, it's 1,200. It's pretty cheap if you look at it. Um, average energy bill increase during the winter months, 23%. So some of us were thinking about unique ways to help people not just stay in their home, but thrive in their home. If they can pay the electric bill and we can help offset some of the cost of the rent, we're helping them not just stay in their home, but we're, they're living comfortably in their home. Hotel night rental for one week, if you did per night, it's about $800. And we were able to negotiate a $550 weekly rental price. Uh, we talked to the hotel here, um, about getting like three rooms for the next three months so people can, we have those already secure for people as they need them. They wouldn't be the same person being in there. The whole goal would be to get him in there, get him warm, get him through the program, and get him to something a little bit more permanent. So our request breakdown is we'd like some funding for the hotels, about $7,000. To really help, that really helps when someone gets put out on the street. They're, you know, not, not, the hospital sometimes doesn't have a choice, but they're putting people out on the street from the hospital because there's nowhere to go. We thought it'd be great to have some places for hookups, and this is all like things that we thought about, but we still would like the opportunity to use the funding for different things as they come up, right? To be, but this is kinda where we were going with it. Uh, these are examples. Uh, some short-term rental assistance, um, some flexible funding for those things like, this person has a way to get in their own house, but they needed this much money to get there, like the $50 application fee. Things like that, that we could really just quickly make those calls, and the person is fully housed, just right like that. Um, and then a little bit of admin. So our ask was 40,000. And our goal is like as we're using the funding is really to report what the need is, how we're helping people, and then really showing you how we could use the money, especially since this is the first time we're gonna be using this funding. Um, projected outcomes, we think that, uh, it'll be about 50 families that we'd be able to use, uh, serve with that funding. Um, and we would really like to work very closely with the other organizations that are getting the funding and continuing to strengthen that. If they can't, if there, there's a piece of funding they need that we're working together, or if they have someone that needs it, and we can help and vice versa, and we really work together to make the families in Cedar Woolley really strong. And also, you know, find new partners. So this is some funding we currently have, so we're already doing the work. Um, in Skagit County, we have $80,000 for diversion funding. It's for the whole county. And, um, they've requested that we use it in East County, but this funding would match that. Um, we already have the infrastructure for that, so it would allow us to just kind of spread out the very small amount of money we got from the county as well. Janiki is paying for Lisa's position, and so we have the person to be going out on there and really finding people and working with them. Um, that's not, um, that's what they want to spend their money on, and then they give us an extra $500 a month for her to buy, um, gas for people and propane in the wintertime, and we bought stoves and clothes and vet bills and stuff, but it's only $500 a month. And then the other outreach staff is all being paid by the Department of Commerce until June or July. And so, um, the funding for the people doing the work is already secure. So this would really give us an opportunity to really dive into the needs of Cedar Woolley. And I really think that if there's a question about what are the needs, this round of funding between the three organizations that are really good about coming up with the data and stuff will give you a huge idea of what the real potential need is here in Cedar Woolley. Thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
Are there any questions? Go ahead, Councilwoman Burns.
Uh, I'm judging from the hotels, three months here, 120 nights for the RV and the short-term rental assistance. Are you thinking this gets you through winter, through next year? What timeframe are you expecting?
Well, we are assuming that it's gonna get us through winter and then, um, but we're, we would like the full year just in case it isn't the coldest one, you know, winter, and there isn't as big of a need. But we let, we were just kinda trying to figure out, like, it's hard to tell when you're kinda guessing what the service is, if that makes sense. But our goal is to really hit and make sure this winter is covered. That was kind of our goal for this funding.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Lavaca?
Thank you, and thank you very much for the presentation. Well put together. Um, I like seeing how the numbers coordinate with other people's data too, so that's always a- a positive. Um, one thing you said that I thought was very interesting was the application fee. And when I first came to Cedar Woolley, I, you know, didn't have a lot of money. I didn't have any money. Got a job, temporary work agency and whatnot, and was trying to get a place, and it was the application fee that was just killing us, me and my wife. Like, you're right, 50 bucks every time, 35 bucks every time.
You don't get the apartment?
Well, and that's it, you know?
Yeah.
And are you gonna apply for five different apartments, 10 different apartments at the same time? So yeah, that's, those kind of things, a lot of people don't tend to think about when you're in a tough spot. So you're in a position to, you're- you're probably in one of the best positions to, um, be able to know who needs help. You're gonna see people coming in, they're gonna be talking to you at the food bank about maybe their needs or their situation, and then your staff's gonna be able to, you know, set off light bulbs and say, okay, well, maybe this could be a positive, maybe this can help. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, we always say that the food kinda enters, they enter into the system at Helping Hands through the food because it's an easy barrier, you know, they might, there might be shame to what's, what's going on, so they come for food. And one of the questions we always ask is like, what brought you here today? And then that usually opens up to, well, I lost, you know, hours at work or whatever, and we have a little check part, like, would you like to talk to a solutions person about other resources that we have available? So then the solutions team, the ops team gives the solutions team their information, and then they just have a conversation of like, here's what we can help with, what are you needing? And then, um, they start, that starts that relationship of like, oh, wow, I didn't realize that you're, we don't know how, we've, we haven't had electricity in six months because we don't know how to pay for it. Well, there's programs for that. Let us connect you with that. So we find a lot of people, um, come to the food bank because they have to, because food is the thing that you need every day. And then it opens them up for all the other things that got them to the food bank. It's kinda like we like to answer their question, why they need to come to the food bank? And that kinda brings up the why we even built a solutions team, uh, because we don't wanna keep getting bigger. So that's kind of our process. Our day-to-day is connecting with the people that come to the food bank.
And then last question, do you have, um, a little, do you have a backlog? Do you have a list of people who are waiting for these services? Is there, or is this something that as, as funding becomes available, then you will find the resources?
I don't think if we have a waiting list, it's kind of, we kinda work with the people that come to us. So it's kinda, I don't wanna say it's a first come, first served, but we have, they have to be participating in some form of a program. So it's not, if they call for the first day and say, hey, my buddy said you have money to pay my rent, it doesn't, that's, it's a whole process for them to say like, okay, what other services are you looking for? So, um, I don't, I could ask Miranda, but there's not really a waiting list. It's more of a who needs it and what programs are they already on? So we would rather support someone who's been working diligently with Family Promise, but Family Promise doesn't have a certain kind of funding, and then we'd rather partner with them because then it makes everything more successful than just random people calling up. So it's kinda, we really lean on, well, who else are you working with?
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Becky.
Well, thank you.
And our last presentation tonight comes from Skagit Valley YMCA. The Director of Philanthropy and Advancement, Tom Pierce, and CEO Dean Snyder are gonna be presenting.
Thank you for the opportunity to present, and on behalf of our colleagues, thank you for the invite to come share the need and how we're trying to and how we're trying to meet some of the need in your community. This, uh, this council has been always forward-thinking and looking out for your, the people in our community and we're grateful. I was listening to a podcast recently and it was our, um, our Surgeon General speaking about his tour around the nation, asking what the main issues that youth are facing. And isolation was a major issue, upwards to sixty to seventy percent of students reporting isolation, which is, comes right down to a mental health issue and which translates also into physical health issues. And so that's, that's an area of real concern for us. And of course, we're working in that area with youth. And in our outreach program that we are centering here in, in Seidra Wully, thanks to your forward-thinking and offering us the, the location in which we can do this, and offer, offering to outreach to all students in Seidra Wully, and we have great numbers there. But where we can also outreach, uh, working with mental health and, and which translates to physical health and also prevention of homelessness. We find a high percentage of population who are housing insecure. The McKinney-Vento numbers across the county are high, they're high here as well in, in, in Seidra Wully. So we thank you for this opportunity to present and share with you some of the need. And I'll just leave that, leave that to Tom to present.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dean. Um, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council for having me back. Uh, I want to introduce a couple of our staff members, Eric Court and, and Lyra Rowe. They're, they're, you know, they're at the street level, they're working day-to-day. And, you know, um, it was great to have them here and have them available. So if you've got any really, really tough questions, I'm going to point to them. I do want to start with a story though. This is a made-up name just to help protect some privacy, but David, he's seventeen. And he recen, he recently came through, it's a tough story. He's been couch surfing for, I don't know, the last two years. Living here locally, um, no place to go. Sort of the, you know, sort of the, um, help of his, his social network, you know, helping him out, giving him a hand. But didn't have a driver's license, wasn't going to school, uh, wasn't working. And he found his way to the, to the rec center. And, uh, he's working now, he's got his Food Worker Card, he's at a permanent home, he's going to school, he's got his driver's license, so. I've got kids who've had some trouble, so it, it always chokes me up a bit to, to, to hear other stories like that. Anyways, so that's the kind of work that we can do. And David, he's seventeen now, he's got a, you know, he's got a foundation to build from, he's got a place to go, he's got a place, a network to rely on. And, and it turns out he's also had some legal problems and we were able to provide him some services through, in one of our partners, um, Legal Youth Services. So it's that type of network that we can also bring into bear at the rec center. So whether it's education, whether it's help with food, um, whether it's help with shelter, whether it's help with planning for the future, life skills, um, you know, there's a lot that goes on. And, you know, you heard the wonderful stories from Rebecca and Audra today. We're working really upstream and trying to help kids prevent from homelessness. That's what we do every day, that's what these guys do every day. So if we can go to the presentation, I'll try to pull myself together. So, um, what we're looking for is support, if you can go to the next page, that would be great, to really help shore up some gap funding that we have through the first half of June twenty-twenty-six. We've got a number of funders in place, but we, as we're planning out over the next two years, we've identified a gap and we're, we're looking for some support to continue ensuring our operation. You guys have seen the proposal, you understand, I think, what we're trying to do. Shore up, uh, and ensure that we're continuing to, um, provide the services. But more importantly, and ju, and just as equally important, actually expand the services, both in terms of days, hours, um, a, and go deeper and try, try to provide more programming support for, for the kids. And so that's part of what we're looking to provide the funding for. Both our outreach, where we're actually going out on the street, Dean had mentioned that, you know, our, our facility is really the hub for our street outreach services. And it, and it's the kids that are really thirteen to twenty-four that we reach out to, to try to, um, you know, provide them the services, find out what's going on, connect them into the, to the right, right places. So, um, as you know, the rec center as well as a free drop-in service. We, we're operating Monday through Thursday. It's the hub that, as I mentioned, for the outreach, where we're really targeting, um, youth that are homeless, don't have places to go, um, and providing access to services like education, daily meals, grab-and-go food. We've got a small pantry for food, we've got a small pantry for clothing, and we've got a small pantry for, for hygiene supplies. A lot, a lot of that comes to us in terms of, you know, donations and obviously our own program. So, so that's what we're doing there. We would, uh, if you go to the next page, the request is a hundred thousand dollars from the fifteen ninety funds and, and the service delivery portion of that. And as I mentioned, that would help support the program, ensure we've got the funding in place, ensure that we're showing up every day through the first half of June twenty-twenty-six. And, and, and that's what we're looking to do. A little bit of information of what and how we show up to the community and the local kids. Since we've opened, and these numbers are actually out of date, but we, we've served over, um, the stated number is ninety-eight hundred meals. It's exceeded ten thousand now, um, through September. We've seen six hundred individual unduplicated youth come through, um, over just thousands and thousands of times. I mean, it's, it's really providing a place, safety, security, you know, a place to go do homework, socialize with your friends, do crafts, get program services. This next number is also out of date. Through September, we've now seen forty-five kids, uh, outreach to, um, that are facing homelessness. And it's well over two hundred instances. So, you know, we, we try to track who they are, provide the services that they need, provide the support that they need, uh, provide them diversion funding. Like discussed earlier, we also have the ability to access some diversion funding, especially for those a little bit older youth, uh, kind of eighteen to twenty-four. And so that's what we're doing. Just this year alone, seventy educational and pro-social programs that we've delivered with our partners, whether that be legal services, as I mentioned, we have, uh, support from Northwest Youth Services, one of our, um, key partners in the area, DV SASS. And, um, so those type of partners that we try to provide face time with the kids so that they know that they've got other support, other services, a, and other help in the community. So, um, that's what we're doing. I threw in some pictures, um, if you, if we have a second, the next two slides, just to give you a flavor of what goes on in the rec center. I don't know who's been there recently, but it's, it's thriving, there's a lot going on. And so we flashed up some pictures here just to show some of the younger kids that come in and use the service every day, you know, playing, um, there's a picture of the, of the food pantry, the clothing pantry. And the next page is a similar picture, just a little bit for insight, um, as to what's going on at the center. So, thank you for having me again. Um, what questions do you have?
Okay, um, Councilwoman Cock?
Yes, uh, and thank you for your presentation, I love the Y. Many years ago, I was a youth basketball coach for y'all, so it was a lot of fun.
We need some more.
Yeah, well, I don't know, I'm not too, getting around too easily right now. My question though is about, uh, you know, we know that there's issues this time of year with the cold. But my, with youth, my guess is that around the holidays is a very difficult time and you might be seeing more kids that can't go home or, or leave home because of high dysfunction drugs, whatever. What do you do with them then?
Well, um, you know, we, we're, we're only open until six. So through other partnerships, if there's a true situation where there's not a safe place to shelter the child, we, we, we reach out to our partners. As you know, I think we, we operate our own homeless shelter out of Mount Vernon. And in fact, we're doubling the bedroom capacity, we, we've demolished the property, we're in the middle of rebuilding it. So that's an avenue for where we can get the kids to a safe place, temporary emergency shelter. Northwest Youth Services also has access. If they're a little bit older, then we, we can reach out to partners like Friendship House or First Step.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilwoman Kestie?
I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out here tonight because you are doing incredible work for our community, our little friends, their parents, grandparents, veterans, everybody. And I commend you on your work. And this is exactly what we've all been talking about, these different things that you're doing and being able to support. So thank you for coming out and for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lavaca?
Yeah, um, yeah, I would just echo that, thank you so much. I know, I've said it before, the Y's impact on my life. And when I was a kid, I was couch surfing most of my childhood with a bunch of other friends and it was just a hangout. They did a late night Y at the, in Port Angeles and people would bring pizza on Saturdays and you'd be open from ten until two o'clock in the morning. And there was two thousand kids in the, in the high school and many of them mobbed around there, so. There's been about, you know, a small handful of people that affected my life, about six up until I was about nineteen. Half of them came from the Y. And I know all, all three of those, uh, that really just impacted my life and my friends' life. And they did so much. So what you guys are doing over there, I know what you're doing and I greatly appreciate it. I greatly appreciate all the mentorship you guys are putting in. You know, it's not a faith-based organization for sure, but young ministers, Christian associations, where it came from. And the people that affected my life, I would have never known, uh, until later on, when, when I went back to, to say thanks and revisit, that they were actually, you know, held strong to their faith and they lived it. And that gave me courage and strength and, yeah, they were amazing people. So thank you for coming up and thank you for doing this to our community as well.
Great, great, thanks.
Okay, Councilwoman Burns?
Well, I really appreciate all of you coming and what you do. We can't thank you enough. Uh, I know I'm echoing sentiments at this point, but you're the, the boots on the ground. You're the ones actually making a difference in people's lives and making it better for the people who live here, so thank you. Looking at your outreach budget, I had a question. Have you had a shortfall the last three years in funding? Are you, you're having to make that up with, uh, out of your other budgets to, to make this happen and keep it going?
Yeah, you, you see the budget in the proposal, we run a deficit, been running about twenty thousand or so a year. It's a little bit higher this year than, than the budget calls for. And what we do is we tap into our own philanthropy and the fundraising, uh, that we generate from this county and the community with, you know, like-minded charitable trusts, people in the community. And, and we apply those fundraising dollars to cover those shortfalls. The, the, the challenge with us as we look out to the next two years is the government contracts that fund a lot of our services, it appears there's, they're going to come up short. From, some of it's a timing issue and some of it's just an availability of, of funding issue. And so we just want to make sure we, we're, we've got everything assured for us. And if there's excess funds, either for, through our own fundraising or from the state, then that'll allow us to increase the number of days, increase the number of hours, and, and increase the number of programs.
So you just touched on my next question, especially after hearing Councilmember Lavaca talk about the hours of the facility he used to go to is Friday, Saturday.
Yeah.
Even if it was just over the summer, I'm curious if you could come back to us with a number of like, what that costs you, what that increase is to get you open for those days, give kids more to do.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't have that specifically for you right now, but, you know, it's, it, it's not going to be directly linear to the cost that we see today because as you, as you see, seventy-five percent of our funding really goes towards staff that run the programs, that reach out to our partners to provide other programming and content to help these kids. And, 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 and those are fairly fixed and what we're trying to do is maintain that staff and that, that expertise. And so, um, to do, you know, to go into Fridays, to go into the weekends, uh, some of that's a scheduling component. Doesn't necessarily translate into, you know, five more headcount, uh, but we would have to take a look at that for sure.
Thank you.
I have another question, but I can yield if there's other council members.
I believe it's on you.
I had one more.
Go ahead.
So I, I guess my question with, would be for all three organizations. How do we, how do we get them the funding that they're requesting here? Is that a motion we would put forth now? Or is that something that we'd have to wait for the next meeting or how do we move forward?
We're talking about the RFP, I don't know.
I can weigh in on this. Yeah, so we had talked previously about having these presentations and council frankly just deliberating based upon your thoughts on these. I think a motion would probably be sufficient to contract with each, each of these agencies. We've been tallying the numbers over here and the total request for all three agencies is two hundred and forty-four thousand. We currently have about two hundred and seven thousand in the bank. We're bringing in about a hundred and eight thousand a year. And then the time horizon is spread out into the middle of twenty-twenty-six because of YMCA's proposal, which is a hundred thousand is spread out. So in a nutshell, we have enough money, uh, and in the middle of twenty-twenty-six, if we didn't spend any more in this forty percent bucket, there would still be a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
And, uh, so for this one, we talked about, uh, having them come back, propose the short term. And then if we wanted to get the full RFP on the next beginning of the year, I think is what you guys were going to aim for. So the, this particular proposal would be outside of that RFP. That would start in, in twenty-twenty-five, give you some time to develop and whatnot. I would make a motion to approve, uh, the budget requested by these agencies for the needs of this community.
I'll second. So we, would you say the total for the request is two forty-four?
Correct, the total for the request is two forty-four, but the time horizon on those requests goes into the middle of twenty-twenty-six. We currently have two hundred and seven. We, we bring in about a hundred and eight thousand a year.
Okay.
So we're, we're fine, we're going to have a balance that will carry forward.
Okay. The total of the request is two hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred.
To be exact.
And that's outside of brick and mortar, which is sixty percent. So there still leaves brick and mortar in there. I think homeless prevention is really what we want to do. We got people that touch the children, which is amazing, people that touch the families, which is amazing, people that touches the seniors and those in need in our community, and we have a really tight team here. So thank you guys so much.
So we have a motion by Lavaca, is there a second before I, there's other questions I know?
I think somebody seconded it.
I did. Councilmember Kestie did. Thank you. And so both, uh, Councilman Cock and Councilman Burns, you each have a question, yes?
Not really a question, I just wanted to, um, follow up on Councilman Lavaca, that that's a great idea because these three organizations have really impressed me. It shows that again, that Seidra Wully is a caring community and these are the three organizations that I think will make the most impact to our community. So I'm all for, uh, fully funding all three.
Okay, so the YMCA was asking a hundred thousand, Helping Hands Food Bank was actually asking forty thousand, correct? Let me just get this down here. And Audra, your total was, Family Promise?
A hundred and four eight hundred.
A hundred and four eight hundred, okay. So, are we all good to go?
Mayor, could I, could I interject real quick and ask that included in the motion be a, a authorization for the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with the recipients?
Very good, okay. Yes, Councilwoman Burns?
Uh, well, one of my questions was actually to do with the RFP that we were putting out. If I remember correctly, we were initially planning on putting the, um, forty percent on there as well. So is the council wanting to put that on there still or were we only doing the sixty percent?
I, I thought that one of the main reasons for that RFP was to get the language in there for the longevity of what we were, um, the brick and mortar units that they were going to build by way of the, of the services. I, I didn't think we were too heavy into that, were we, Charlie?
My, my understanding in the council's last conversation is that you essentially split out the conversation on the forty percent to tonight's presentations and that the sixty percent was for the RFP. Now, you could spend more than sixty percent with the RFP, there's still funding in there, but, um, you could also come back and look at more of the forty percent funding down the road as well.
And my only other question, have we had any interest expressed by any other entities outside these three?
Well, we have not, but we also haven't advertised it either. The council has only invited in these three.
Can I just say real quick, another thing I was impressed with by all three of these is how well they communicate with each other. So I get the feeling if one of them can't meet a need, they'll happily, uh, connect with one of the others. So that's another reason I'm really supportive of this.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, Councilwoman Burns?
Uh, no further questions, just a statement that I am on the board. And I am on the board for Helping Hands Food Bank, but I have no financial interest in the organization, so I will be voting.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other questions, comments? Okay, if not, we have a motion by Councilwoman Lavaca, and it was seconded by Councilwoman Kestie. This would authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with the following agencies, the YMCA for 100,000, Helping Hands Food Bank for 40,000, and Family Promise for 104,800. And so Nikki, is there anything else that needs to be added to that? Are we good with that?
We're good here, Mayor, thank you.
All right, so all those in favor, sticking five by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? I love it. Motion carries. Awesome. All right, thank you all for coming in, for giving the presentations. Thank you for being a part of our community. We're really honored that you're doing great work here with those individuals that we love and respect, and we want them to see, want to see them housed, good heating, and, you know, living a life that's safe. All right, thank you. Okay. All right. That was awesome. Moving on now to city administrative reports, Charlie?
I'll report this evening, Mayor.
Okay. Moving on to council member and mayor report. I'll start with the council members, and I'll begin with you, Councilman Lloyd.
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay, Councilwoman Kestie?
Well, everybody's leaving, but I was going to tell them about the festivities for Halloween coming up and that you're all welcome to come on Thursday, October 31st, starting at 4:30. Tell all your little friends, there's a kiddie parade, and then to come trick or treating. And at the museum, we'll also be trick or treating and having events, so that's all.
Thank you again for coming. Thank you for staying and listening. It starts at 4:30. Councilwoman Diamond?
Good evening. Just quickly, I had a couple people ask what the status of the Lodging Tax Commission was. They've seen it advertised several times. However, I, I have one person that specifically said that she had applied but hadn't heard anything back. I was wondering how long you're waiting to fill that spot, how many applications that you might have, and what the status of it is.
We had two people who I know of volunteer, and I've gotten back to them. So if you want to check with me after, I'm happy to follow up with that. We have been doing outreach for, we're required to have two members of organizations who might benefit from the funds and two members of representatives of businesses who pay into it. That's the one that's a little bit harder to get. We haven't had any volunteers for that. So we've been reaching out to several, several places, and I think we have two. I have one for sure, yes, and a second maybe that I'm hoping to hear back by Friday. So we will have that committee ready to form hopefully by the next council meeting, assuming we get a second business representative volunteer.
Councilman Henderson? I'm sorry, Councilman Diamond? Okay, Councilman Henderson?
Nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Councilman Cock?
Just a couple of things. One, on entrances into the city, I do want to commend whoever did the work coming from concrete on Highway 20, the beautiful trees that are now showing fall foliage. You know, they alternate evergreen deciduous, it's very pretty. And, oh, I forgot to mention, I wanted to thank Kelly for a great one-on-one to discuss the budget, very informative. And this probably, this is, I'm sure discussed before I got on council, and I don't necessarily need a answer tonight, but it's, it's interesting to me that the, those big lots that were the former Ford dealership on West Ferry, they seem like pretty perfect economic development locations. You know, the old saying, location, 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 and that's just coming right into the town. But, you know, it seems like they've been lots for a long time, so that's just my two cents.
All right, thank you. Councilman Burns?
I do have one question. If I remember correctly, Nikki, you were going to get a letter for Councilman Lavaca and the rest of us about the 1590 funding, the 50-year requirement from the state. Have you been able to get that?
So as we talked about last time, I did send a communication, two communications to Department of Commerce, the second of which was a follow-up to Commerce's response to me. Commerce's initial response to my email was essentially that while 50 years is consistent with the Affordable Housing Program and the, the other program, I can't remember which one, this housing is meant to be permanent in nature. And so my response to Commerce was, so I understand that you're saying 50 years is the minimum, but the expectation is permanence. And Commerce has not responded to me, which is why I haven't forwarded along. I can certainly just forward along the email chain without Commerce's response. I can send a follow-up to my email asking for them to clarify, but as of this moment, they have not responded, and that was several weeks ago.
Okay, if you could follow up and forward, that'd be fantastic. Thank you. And I also wanted to thank Kelly for meeting with me to discuss the budget. I appreciate it, it was very informative, and that's all I have tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Lavaca.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I, I have the strategic planning meeting, I think one of them was canceled again. I'll have to get with you, Charlie, because I think that's two of them. As the chair of the committee, I was never informed about why or, or to do it. So I think we'll get, go in with that one. Now, I also want to thank Kelly for spending an hour with me. That was very generous, I know your time is expensive and, and you needed. Same thing with you, Bill. It was wonderful to speak with you both about the budget and go over that in detail. I really enjoyed that. So I learned a lot on both of those ends, and it was very helpful, so thank you.
Just wanted to add, Councilmember Lloyd is the chair of the Strategic Planning Committee. So I work with him, you're with planning and business development, and I definitely will talk with you on that if we ever have a cancellation.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so just a couple of things. On Monday, it is First Responder Day, it's First Responder Recognition Day, so something to keep in mind. Thank one of your first responders for all the work that they are doing, the service that they provide our community. Also, met with Nicole Rusin and her assistant Jillian from the Skagit Valley Tulip Festival. One thing that I've heard over and over is that there isn't a whole lot of activities, or Cedar Woolley is not really acknowledged as far as events that are happening here in the Tulip, during the Tulip Festival. So in meeting with her, we're talking about the possibility of bringing in some of the original art that is used to do the tulips and doing a display. So having that here during the Tulip Festival, so that's very exciting, and we hope that that will come to fruition. And the other thing I went to, it's called, it happens annually, today was the third annual event. It's called You Have Been Served, and it has to do with Community Court. Community Court is an amazing, it's an amazing opportunity for our citizens. And I want you to know that our own Judge Stiles, his court actually has, their statistics are actually the very best. They're all really good, but Judge Stiles here in Cedar Woolley has actually, has the best numbers. So for example, the recidivism of the program since its inception. So we have, you know, 90% that are staying with it and only 10% that have kind of fallen away. So, you know, no new charges for 90% of the graduate, for those who have graduated, and new charges were found for post-graduation in the amount of 10%. So that's excellent, excellent statistics. And then also for the compliance rate, in other words, for those who are actually in the program right now, we have 86% who are in compliance and 14 who are out of compliance. And for the other cities, a lot of times it's 30%, it's much greater. So it's a program that we do support here in Cedar Woolley. It is something that is in our budget. It is something that the council, in their wisdom, and I'm very glad, are supporting and giving it a lot of, giving it the wheels that it needs to really be successful and to get people within our community a second chance at life and being good citizens. So anyway, I wanted to mention that tonight. All right, so moving on now to public comments. So, public comments, we have three, we have three public hearings tonight, and they are going to be on, thank you, Kelly. The public hearings are going to be on the moratorium, the energy storage, the 2526 biennium budget, and the 2025 property tax levy. If you have comments regarding any of those three, please wait until the public hearing to provide those, those statements or comments that you want to make. So with the public comment right now that I am opening up, that would be for other things pertaining to the city. So just so everybody's aware, because I want to make sure that everybody is heard and that it goes on the record under the right, under the right venue. Perfect, all right. So right now, I'm going to open just public comment. It is 6:59, and is there anybody in the chamber who has public comment? Good evening, Mr. Riley.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council. I know most of you in one way or another. I'm here to invite you to an event. December 3rd is the North Stars Dinner at McIntyre Hall, and I will be the keynote speaker. I'm somebody that went from homelessness to homeownership here in Cedar Woolley. I've experienced all of the shortcomings and all the things that can hold you down firsthand. Councilwoman Diamond had a front row seat, watching me grow and build my family for seven years. I've been a part of the North Star Project since its inception, and one of the greatest things that is missing is your presence. And if we are truly going to make a change, not only in Cedar Woolley, but in the county in general, we need you there. I need you there. And so I am here to personally invite each and every one of you to that dinner on December 3rd. Your community, this community, needs you there. Good night.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else for a public comment? Okay, how about online? If so, please raise your hand, and Woody will unmute you so you can make comment. All right, seeing none, it is 7:01, and I'm going to close public comment. And now we are going to move into the public hearings, and we'll take them one at a time. So the first one is the moratorium, the energy storage is ordinance 2081-24. We're holding a public hearing regarding this, and it is going to be Mr. Tom Glover, our Community Development Director, who's going to be leading you through this. And the way that a public hearing works is that our directors do, our directors will give the presentation. After they have finished giving the presentation, I will open it up to the public to give public comment. And once they have given public comment, then we will turn it over to the council where they can both ask questions, provide comments, or any, any other thoughts regarding it. So with that, we'll begin our first here, public hearing. I don't think, I don't think I've ever done three in a row. This is really kind of interesting. It's going to be fun tonight. All right, so Tom, you're up.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, council. At your last meeting, you approved an emergency ordinance approving a six-month temporary moratorium on the receipt and processing of project permit applications for utility development projects involving the storage or generation of electricity. Because that was an emergency ordinance, there was not time to have a public hearing, but we can't, we, but it is allowed that we have a public hearing afterwards, and required that we do have a public hearing. And so that's the purpose of our hearing tonight, is to take comment from the public regarding that ordinance.
All right. So with that, you have completed it, correct? Everything you want to say? Okay, so I'm going to open it up to the public for public hearing comments, so, all right. All right, hi Sally.
Sally Carlson, I'm a member of Stewards of Skagit nonprofit that we formed to stop our best project here in Cedar Woolley. In 2022, the census states that Washington State has lost 5.2% of farmland, the fourth highest in the nation. We need to preserve our farmland if we want to eat, period. Energy needs the least conflicting citing process. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sally. So Judy, I also have your name down here. Did you all also want to speak too? All right, perfect.
First of all, I want to thank you guys for allowing us to talk and view our opinions and everything, and I know quite a few of you, but it's been a pleasure to see how our council has stood up against this best project and how quickly and hopefully effectively that we can keep them off the industrial sites in town or around town. I just, I hope, and I really hope and pray, you know, that we write this moratorium or this code effectively enough that we keep these places away from our schools, our communities, hospitals, all of that. You know, I just don't feel that Golden Eye, where it's, where it's being proposed, we all know this, it's too close to our community. And I really appreciate you guys doing what you can, and I know your hands are tied, but I just want to say thank you and keep up with the fight because we're here as well, and I'm very involved with the Stewards of Skagit as well, the treasurer of the nonprofit. And what an organic group of people that we've joined together. Let me tell you, I feel like I've known these people for years. And, you know, well, hopefully we'll, we'll win against Golden Eye and keep them out of our area. But I appreciate you guys keeping them out of the areas of the schools and the hospitals as much as we can, write this code to be very effective and keep them away from us and put them in the right places. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I normally don't make comment, but I just got to say thank you so much for keeping up the fight, and I hope you all will. Yeah.
We will.
All right. And is there anybody else who would like to make public comment regarding the energy storage? No? Going, going, gone? Okay, all right. So with that, I will turn this over then to the council.
I had a question maybe for Nikki, and you might not know this, Nikki. The, the county recently passed a moratorium on these best projects, I think, in farmland. Is that, can that short-circuit the state agency, or are we still out of luck on that?
So I think the short answer to that is no. The state, they can go around local regulations. They do have to file something that says whether or not the project is consistent with the local regulations, but they would have already done that most likely before the moratorium was put into place. And what that does is it sort of circumvents, my understanding is it circumvents the process of having a full adjudication of the project and sort of speeds it along to a more administrative approval process. So if they got that moratorium passed before the consistency analysis was done, then it might have, it might make a difference. But it also, I think, was too late to the game to, to make a difference for this project. But hopefully, there's been enough public comment on this project that they will go to adjudication instead of straight to administrative approval process.
Thank you. And just an advice, as somebody who used to be a communications professional, there's two people running for governor, let them know about it. Let your legislators know about it. The more noise you make, the better. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Lavaca.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So when I had talked with Robert Knoll, he had made, he had made mention that this is a pretty big endeavor for Olympia onto our energy company, which is PSC, and other energy companies. And so their goal is to put these all around Washington. There's not one up, but the, he was saying, we've only got five years, we've got to move. And so it's really good that we're taking this step now because it's, it's going to keep coming. This is, this is the beginning of a tidal wave of these units going all over Washington. So I think we're taking a leading step, and Charlie and, and Thomas, you guys did, or Charlie, I believe you wrote this up for the most part with legal advice, Thomas? So you guys did an excellent job, and it really helps other communities in an enormous way to see what we're doing. So great job.
Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Burns?
Sort of slightly. Intervener status, any update there, Charlie?
No updates at this time. We did, we did check with the county a while back, and the county said when the opportunity presents itself to potentially intervene, they will have a discussion. They don't know what they'll do at that point.
There isn't an ability to intervene until the notice to adjudicate is sent out.
That was my follow-up, thank you.
All right. Okay, if there are no other comments or questions, I am going to close this public hearing for the moratorium, energy storage, ordinance 208124. And we do not need to move forward. And we do not need to move forward with a motion on this, correct? All right. Moving on then to the second public hearing, which is the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six biennium budget, ordinance two zero eight two two four. This is the third public hearing. It's also the first read of the ordinance, so no uh, recommendation for action is being requested tonight. Um, we will use the same procedure as we did with the first um, public hearing, and it is seven oh nine, I will open up this public hearing. And Kelly, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so first, just wanted to go over really quickly what was included in this. As the mayor stated, this is our third public hearing. We've put the dates up there for the previous two as well. Um, first, just provided a brief presentation, it's only a couple slides, not too much information to go over. But then there's a lot of detailed information, um, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to, happy to take those. Um, the first thing is the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget ordinance. This is the actual ordinance, um, the, the first review of it. We've also included a budget summary document. At the last meeting, there were some questions about uh, cash reserves, and uh, we've included in the budget summary columns for the estimated beginning cash, as we're not quite uh, through twenty-twenty-four yet, these are just estimates. And then what are preliminary budget revenues, preliminary budgeted expenditures, and then what the excess or deficit in each fund would be? And then what the estimated ending cash in each of those, each of those funds, hoping that that answers that question of, of reserve in all of our city funds. Um, also included is the preliminary budget. This is the big detailed um, account of the budget. Similar to last time, we've highlighted changes that were made since the September twenty-fifth council meeting, presentation of the budget. We've provided the same information um, in a different way in the preliminary departments, so this is it just shrunk down um, by department and fund. And then we've also included our FTE count, so our full-time equivalent count, and uh, the calculations for that count is all included in these budget numbers. So Woody, we can start with the first slide. Actually, you can just go to the second slide. So the objective today is to have our third public hearing, we're required to have three, so this meets our requirement. Um, answer any questions from the prior meeting and just go over some notable items. Also, wanted to mention that ne- next steps, so included in this budget is our property tax uh, budgeted levy, so we'll have a hearing on that right after this one. Um, also, in November, we'll be talk, we'll have a second read of this budget ordinance, and we'll also be going over utility taxes, so, or utility rates, excuse me. So just wanted to give that view. Um, so as I mentioned at the last meeting, there were some questions about reserves. Um, we generally have reserves in most of our, most of our funds, but the most notable is the general fund. So with the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget, we estimate that we'll have approximately twenty-eight percent of our uh, operating expenditures for those years in, in reserve in that fund, which is well above the recommended or um, reasonable minimum reserve amounts in those funds. And I think if you go to the next slide, that's really all I had um, to present tonight. There wasn't a lot of significant change since the first reading, other than the items the council made motions about. And that's it for now.
Okay, thank you. So then I will um, open it now up to the public for uh, any comments on the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six biennium budget? Is there anybody within the council who'd like to? All right, all right, okay, Sally.
Sally Carlson, here I am again. Um, thank you, council people who questioned the budget. Um, I was at the October ninth, I think it was, meeting. Um, and all I have to say is, I wish my income had doubled in the last twelve years. You know, big government is not the best government. That's all, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Okay. Uh, with that, then I'm gonna turn it over to the city council. Are there any questions or comments that you have?
I do, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Lavaca.
Um, again, thank you both, Kelly and Bill, for meeting with me and talking with me. Um, I really appreciate that, and thank you for adding in that ending balance. I reached out and got the legacy budgets that we had, uh, that we have on file. For some reason, I was looking in the council packets for them, and so you steered me right in the right direction, Kelly, and I appreciate that. And it's, it's interesting to go through them and see them, and see how they balance out and see how they, um, the charts they build, which are similar to ours. Um, I like that they had that beginning cash balance, and they showed kind of the percentages they were at, which was, you know, in between twenty to twenty-four percent on average throughout for some of the, for some of them, like two thousand twelve, two thousand fourteen, two thousand sixteen, they have that down there. Um, so it was really good to see that it's in line with what we've got. On that beginning cash balance, which is our ending cash balance in your sheet, that money, it looks like in the previous budgets for, you know, twenty oh eight up, it would like roll over, okay? We have sixty or six point seven million in there, we budget our twenty-one million, and we spend our, with our revenue coming in at twenty-one, we spend twenty-one, and that six point seven rolls over, or it, it fluctuates, it comes smaller and bigger. Um, am I correct to assume that what we're looking at for that ending year balance, that's not allocated cash similar to those budgets?
Yes, so that's cash that's left over after you've received all your revenue and you've expended all the budgeted expenditures.
Okay, yeah, so we, we basically got uh, what it looks like, you know, almost, I don't have the exact math, but around twenty-four percent, twenty-five percent. Um, or no, it looked like more than that, we had about twenty million total in cash um, rollover in the ending balance for twenty-twenty-four. Is that right?
Correct.
Well, that's like fifty percent of our reserve, that's really good. And uh, it's nice to see that number. I don't know that, I've heard that number being in a bank account or that we've had access to um, within those funds before, so that was surprising news.
Yes, some of that is held in our um, utility reserve accounts, uh, specifically for the construction of a new wastewater treatment plant, um, but you can see that broken out by fund, and then, of course, the rest of it is spread out through the other.
Some of it goes to E and R, R and R funds, some of it goes into other things, but to know that that, if there's an emergency, we could like, okay, let's figure out what we can do with what we have in our, in our bank, in our pocket. So that's really cool. Um, I did go through this uh, on a number of items with Bill, just asking about some expenses. They were small expenses, but every expense helps, and uh, everything we can kind of save on to build up that is helped, so um, part of that was like the CISO, or chemicals, or office supplies, or um, you know, uh, various things like that, furniture for, for uh, buildings, and so, yeah, we had a great conversation about trying to just um, narrow down the cost and see that, just like what was, what we've said in the past, that our budgets, our revenue in our homes don't, don't go up as quickly as the cities does, so I appreciate that.
Councilman Cock?
Uh, yes, I, uh, first of all, I wanted to thank you, Kelly, for the reserve information. It was wonderful to see because in case God knows what happens, it looks like we're prepared. I, I had a kind of a specific question, uh, I don't know if I have the right fund. Um, it, oh, it's under the Arterial Street Fund, two thousand twenty-five. It said eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand for the Cascade Trail Phase Two A, and as a sort of addendum to that, an observation at a public works committee, I was surprised to learn that the Cascade Trail ends, uh, city ownership of the Cascade Trail ends halfway into the city, and the railroad owns the rest. Uh, but what, what is that for?
If I'm right of what you're asking for, that is the anticipated construction funds. It's about between seven hundred and fifteen, eight hundred thousand dollars is the estimate to complete the Cascade Trail Two A project, which is what David Lee was in design uh, on, and uh, wasn't able to finish before he retired, so I was able to um, capture some additional design and right-of-way money to finish that design and potentially start construction next year, if not, we'll construct it in twenty-twenty-six.
Uh, is there any chance the railroad will give us that property?
Oh, okay, you're talking about two different properties.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so um, the cap, piece of Cascade Trail, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, um, that you're talking about is like, goes from Med CAF.
Yeah.
East, which is railroad right-of-way.
Right.
And it's still railroad right-of-way. What we do is we have um, I don't know if we have an official MOU, but an understanding with the railroad that it, they are, um, if they want to come by and put in a railroad there, that goes away. But uh, we're maintaining it as a public access trail. Uh, at some point in time before Mark Feiburger left, he said it would be a good idea if we can uh, purchase that from the railroad, so it stays a permanent trail in the future. But right now, that's what we're doing, uh, our, our part in that. The Cascade Trail, what you're referring to is the project number Two A, which is what is on its way, is, so uh, the next section of that, going west, will eventually get that trail all the way to the hot, the Peace Health Hospital. But Two A is just the first segment of that, and the intention was to construct it in twenty-twenty-five, it may be twenty-twenty-six, depending on how fast we can finish up the design this spring, if we get it in time for the construction season.
That's great, thank you.
And uh, a piece of that will be, in April is the SCOG's call for projects, and so I intend to apply for the construction money in their transportation alternative program funding source, so that that uh, eight hundred thousand you're referring to will potentially be eighty-six point five percent matched to the federal grant, and then we will um, only have to pay thirteen and a half percent of those construction funds.
Is that all railroad right-of-way, all the way through?
No, that's right-of-way, the city actually is going through right-of-way process right now to finalize our right-of-way purchases. It's just simply northerly, if you want to call it that, of uh, Highway twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Henderson?
Yes, thank you. Um, so Kelly, um, I was wondering if you could help me understand on the um, on the budget uh, worksheet that I got on the third. Um, I was going through a lot of the stuff, um, comparing, you know, two years ago, so twenty-twenty-three and on, and um, so I noticed a twenty-five million dollar discrepancy between the budget worksheet that I got on the third and then the budget worksheet that we got for this meeting for twenty-three, for the revenues. Can, can you help me understand why the twenty-twenty-three actuals changed between October third and today?
By how much?
Twenty-five million.
Um, I don't think they did.
I have uh, I can, I can give you the fund numbers, uh, one oh two, one oh eight, one oh nine, one twelve, and then it goes to the three hundred series, uh, Sewer Operations Fund, I got it, there's just a long, a long list of discrepancies. The running total for twenty-twenty-three revenues is thirty-three million. And then on uh, the one that we have for today's, it's fifty-eight million.
Yeah, I, I don't think I could be able to compare that um, effectively in this moment, but I'm happy to look back on that.
It's the worksheet that you, that you emailed me, is the one that I, I was working off of for the last meeting, and then um, doing compa- side-by-side comparisons between?
I can take a look.
Okay. And then um, so what else I got here is, so we had our budget hearing last week. We cut a few things out of the budget, and yet our expenditures for twenty-twenty-five went up by four hundred and eighty thousand, and our expenditures for twenty-twenty-six went up by one point three million. Can you, can you help me understand what like the major differences are between two weeks ago and now?
Um, so we highlighted any changes um, to the budget document? Let me see if we can scan through real quick and see. Um, was there a specific fund you were interested in?
Well, I'm, I'm just looking at the bottom line for um, for expenditures for twenty-five and twenty-six as compared to, as compared to the budget worksheet that we had two, two weeks ago. So twenty-twenty-five increased by four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in expenditures.
I would guess, um, and again, i- it's hard um, to answer these questions on the spot, so um, I'm always happy to answer them in public session, but if, if you give them to me beforehand, I would be happy to look, research it in detail before the meeting. But I would guess that the biggest expenditure changes and prob- and to the revenues is adjustments to uh, transfers in and out, so we have to balance transfers, um, transfers in and out among all the funds, and those get included in revenues and expenditure totals at the bottom. Um, and we made sure that everything was lining up appropriately, and I know there was uh, some big projects that we made sure we were shoring up, that the expenditures we had included for those projects and the transfers matched up. So I, I know we did that in, in between now and our last uh, discussion of the budget, but without looking at all of the detail, I can't give you an immediate answer.
Okay. Um, all, all I'm looking at is, we cut some things out of the budget two weeks ago, and the amount went up and not down overall.
Yeah, and uh, like we talked about at the last meeting, um, the previous review of the budget, we had still needed to do some significant work on the utility funds, so we have done that work in, in the utility funds, and I would guess that that is the significant fluctuation of those numbers. We didn't do a lot of changes in the remainder of the funds. Uh, last time, council made a motion to remove the addition of the mayor from part-time to full-time, and the HR analyst from part-time to three-quarters time, so we did remove that. We made a couple of changes um, in parks funding. Our, our general fund and our parks fund are funded by the same unrestricted sources, so we can kind of fluctuate uh, revenue sources between those two funds. Um, so we made that changes, and then we made some minor changes, and just, you know, small errors we found here and there, minor adjustments. But the majority of the work we did was in the utility funds to make sure we had those properly lined up, re- reevaluating um, our revenues to make sure they were in line with the, with the changes we um, expect the council to make um, for utility rates, and then again, shoring up those projects um, in those utility funds.
Okay, yeah, one of the biggest differences I see in those would be the Arterial Streets Fund appropriated for twenty-six. Um, you know, we're, we're a little bit north of one and a half million on the difference between a week ago, so it, it was definitely the utility funds that would make up that difference. That I'm seeing. I'd like to look at uh, I'd like to look at what the budget would look like if we did, out of our operating budgets for all departments, if we did certain percentage reductions, like for instance, we could do a three percent reduction over all departments, and we could look at one and a half percent and the five percent, you know, and just plug those in, and uh, do a feasibility on those, and if anything on there is feasible to lower, then I'd like to lower it and start lower and work with budget amendments throughout the next two years than I would going too high and leaving additional funds allocated for things that we might not need to do. And if, and if it's not feasible, it'd be interesting to take a look at. And if, and if it's not feasible, it'd be interesting to take a look at it and kind of know why. So, um, that, that's something I'd like to see for sure, um, moving forward. And before we get to our, before we get to our workshop in November, it'd be nice to kind of see some feedback from the department heads taking a look at, taking a look at what, what we can cut, what we can't, and, uh, kind of tighten our belts a little bit. And I, this is not me talking at you, Kelly, this is just me talking at the entire room. Um, that's, that's something that I'd like to see.
Yeah. Uh, my only comment about that is that it is, um, challenging, an approach of across the board, five percent, three percent, one percent, is pretty challenging, especially for certain departments who are already have minimum expenses, you know? Um, you know, some departments are basically just staff and office supplies, and, um, a three percent across the board for those kind of departments is really difficult. And the majority of our expenditures outside of projects that are funded with specific funds like real estate excise tax, traffic impact fees, outside of public works projects, the vast majority of, or not the vast majority, a, a large portion of the city's expenditures is staffing. So, you know, if we're talking about a percentage cut across the board, it's hard to get there with anything but, um, reduction in projects, needed public works projects, or unfortunately, reduction in staffing.
Right, so like when we budget, we have stuff that we can and can't touch, right? So like, you know, say I got eight guys that work for me, and they all get paid X amount of dollars an hour, and they're all union workers, right? I can't touch their wages, I can't touch their benefits, I can't touch any of that stuff, their, their, medical, that all come, that, that all would come into one department's budget, right? Everything underneath there, all the gravel I need to buy, all the, all the screws, all the diesel, all the, everything, those are all, those are all things that I can take a look at and adjust. Now, I, I'd like to be clear, I'm not talking about cutting employees here, I'm talking about an operating budget outside of the realm of what, what our employees are, right? So, um, you know, find, find a way to cut spending on paper, on, on gas, on diesel, on everything. And let's take a look at what's feasible, like what we can do to feasibly lower our, our expenditures. And, and whatever's not, it's not feasible, but I just, you know, like to know why. You know, like, we can't lower anything from this budget because of this and because of that. Uh, you know, this, this is a lot of money we're getting ready to vote on here in the next month and a half, and so I, I'd like to.
I think it's, I think it's interesting to note, something like, I think you would find interesting, Councilman Henderson, is that seventy-five percent of the budget is for our, um, emergency services. So it's our fire and our police, seventy-five percent of the budget. That means twenty-five percent of the budget is for parks, it's for streets, it's for solid waste, it's for wastewater, it's for the community development and building, it's for the finance. So your twenty-five percent of the budget is for all those other departments. So to cut anything from those departments would, that, that is major. And they really are working right now at a minimum. We spent almost two days, full days, um, going through and eliminating things out of the budget. Every department head did that. We sat and did that, um, to get down to the bare bones. And I do know, and you do know too, that the department heads have brought to you, um, grants that they have been looking for. One of them, the last one had to do with, uh, going paperless for the, um, the permitting. So a lot of that, um, Tom, you had talked about that, that was actually in your department. We had gone for that, hoping that we could have that, and that would eliminate a lot of the paper. So, but otherwise, we have to have the paper to do it. Otherwise, we do. Otherwise, we have to do it, and we have to have the people to do it. We, so until we get programs into place and get funding for these programs into place where we can reduce, uh, um, individuals from departments or have them, their jobs, uh, eased and, uh, by using programs, until that all happens. Right now, I'm here to tell you, the city is running very, very lean, very lean.
Okay, so what, what we're saying, or what I'm hearing then is that, like, this is our bottom line. You guys have cut, trimmed all the fat, you know, there's nowhere else to go, right? But that's what I'm hearing?
We have, we have trimmed a lot over the last four years, um, the last budget and for these two years, this budget, um, almost entirely in the line items. So, yeah, we've done a tremendous amount of work there. There is very little, uh, I was just looking at the general fund numbers. So typically, the, the council passes the budget at the fund level. So typically, if, if there were cuts to be made, we would look at them at the fund level, and we would sometimes disproportionately impact one area over another area, just based on discussion and based on, to Kelly's point, you know, where there's opportunity to potentially cut. Because there are also areas that are statutorily protected, that we have, absolutely have to have a person in this position and that position. But it would be, I would say, a very tall order to cut seven hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund at this point without having serious impacts on services and without looking at staff reductions.
And one thing we presented at, um, last meeting was how it changed, how it's changed over time, you know, that we, we EMS services used to be a, um, uh, medic one, so we've, medic ones no longer, we've incorporated that, you know, the, um, the police levy lid lift, the fire levy lid lift. And we also talked about it last, last meeting, um, the percentage increase over the next two years. So we estimated, and I haven't updated these numbers with the revised budget, but that, uh, the budget would increase about five percent from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, you know, primarily due to inflation. We talked about that our, um, our medical benefits are going up seven point three percent. So, you know, when you think about medical benefits, benefits being about a third of someone's wages, um, that, you know, we're trying to keep costs down as much as, as much as we can, um, even though prices are increasing. And, um, Mayor, just wanted to, uh, say that the seventy-five percent for, uh, police and fire is correct in the general fund. So the general fund pays for council, legislative, the court, finance, IT, engineering, building and planning, um, and then police, fire and EMS. So, um, public safety is seventy-five percent of those activities.
Yes, Councilman Burns?
So I'm curious, the city staff has already, uh, cut a lot of things from the budget. There were a lot of things that they needed. They came to you and said, hey, this is what we need to be successful to actually provide the citizens with what they expect, what they need from the city. So would you be able to give us a list of the things that have already been cut? Um, the items that departments really needed and aren't going to get now, because we had to balance the budget to what we currently have? I understand that's not something you're just going to pull out of a hat, but if you could give that to us for the next, uh, budget meeting, I'd really appreciate that.
Yeah, and we, um, you, you could also see that in the difference, at the last, um, meeting, we highlighted all of the differences. So the first public hearing was our, all the departments brought their budgets and revenue estimates, and we presented that to council. And then, uh, the management team went back and m- made some significant changes. So at the second meeting, we highlighted those items in the packet. Um, so that is currently available on the website to look at. Um, all those highlighted items are things that we made changes for. Some of the things that we, that departments requested that didn't make it to the budget, the police department had requested an additional officer, um, the building and planning for a building official, um, a, uh, part-time, a, a second part-time permit tech. Was there one other thing? That was it? Um, we took those items, um, out of the budget. The fire department had considered, uh, four, um, fire, or considered one fire marshal and then four, um, captains or? Um, so all of those things were requested by departments that, due to balancing the budget, were removed.
On, on top of that, there were reductions in the line items as well, and there were a lot of little ones and some bigger ones, and we'll have to go back and, and highlight those at the next meeting.
And Bill just reminded me that there was about a hundred thousand dollars in, uh, facility items that were removed from the budget as well.
Um, I do have a couple more things. I, I did want to say the reserve funds, I'm glad to see that we have them, and I would like to see us continue to increase them as costs go up, obviously. It's going to take more money to stretch out over the same period of time, so increasing, that's always a, a good idea. But something that's been expressed a concern to me back when we were doing the firefighter levy lid lift was clarity on the amount of funds that are taken in based on the levies and bonds that we currently have out, that we are collecting funds for. And I was wondering if it is possible for us to either put that into a separate account so that it is a, a physically separate line item on the budget, uh, for that complete clarity to the public, that we would be able to post on the city website and say, you know, this is exactly what we're taking in, this is how much of it's being spent each year on the police, the fire, the city hall. I think the, I think we had the one bond and two levies, does that sound right, that are active?
Um, we just have the general, the general levy, and there is like two lines when you look at the county records of like regular property tax and then those, um, who have exemptions to property tax, so their property tax is lower. But right now, all we have is the general property tax, which includes, is all encompassing of the, the police levy, um, from a couple of years ago and our most recent fire levy. Um, we are, uh, like we talked about when we passed the fire levy lid lift, um, that we have additional funds from that levy upfront so that it can last us for ten years. Um, so we did create a separate fund, which is on here, it's zero zero two fire reserve fund. So we are putting that excess money into a separate fund, so it has revenues, um, at least for the first five years, um, but no expenditures in the thought. And of course, um, we'll reevaluate every year, you know, just think things change a little bit, the calculations change a little bit. But, um, every year for the first five years, we'll put that excess into that reserve fund. And then for the, to guarantee that for the next five years, we can fund those, those, um, eight positions. So we are trying to track that as diligently, um, as we can. You know, it might not be worth our time to track it, you know, down to the penny, um, but we do our best to, to calculate a reasonable number there. So you can see, um, here in twenty twenty-four, we estimate to put in, uh, two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars into that fire reserve fund, and it'll go down over time, um, how much we put in. So twenty twenty-five, we're going to put in two hundred and seventy-two, and twenty twenty-six, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
Well, okay, so that's what we're saving, but I was more referring to how much we're taking in for the amount that we increased the levy, uh, explicitly because of the fire department, and then how much of it is expended onto the fire department. That portion, uh, would be nice to have in writing separate line item for people.
It's hard, um, to do, um, only because we don't get money in that says this is for your twenty twenty-four proposition one. Um, but the first year, I think we got, and I, I can write down this number, um, we got one point four million. So that is what we calculate that number for each, each year. Um, instead of doing the complicated part of what portion of the new construction would that be in the one percent. Um, but we can definitely make that clear, uh, somewhere how we get to that number.
Yeah, I was thinking that, uh, if we went back to the levy prior to, let's say, prior to the police, uh, levy lid lift, and we were at this number, this percentage that we were taxing, this amount that we were taking in, looking at the increase that occurs because of the extra amount, the extra percentage that we're allowed to, uh, take in because of that levy, and then saying, okay, well, that's a separate line item in our funds, making sure that that always goes to the police department, and then having the clarity of that number. I know it's a little challenging to calculate, but I'm assuming there's some way that we can.
Yeah, um, yeah, we can, we can talk about that. There's some like logistics behind and how, how and when we get property tax and, um, but yeah, we can do that.
Okay, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Kestie, thank you.
Um, so last time, bear with me, I'm freezing. Um, last time, we talked about needs and wants, and, um, the council came together and there, there was a want for the mayor to move full-time and then to move HR up, and, and we, we cut that right out. And then I see that there is also, um, ten thousand dollars allocated to the, um, arts committee, and that's another want, in my opinion, not a need. Um, so if we were able to cut that, and I don't know how any, everyone else feels up here about that, um, that would be another cut that could be made, because we have some things coming up that are out of our control with garbage rates, and, um, we can't control that, but we can control the one percent, property tax. And, uh, with what we just saved, I'd like to pass that on to our constituents who don't get those raises and are really hurting right now. So I'm not sure how you guys feel about, I, I know we had talked about it before, the arts commission, or, for ten thousand dollars. I would like to see that cut. Um, there's plenty of ways to get art, and like I said, um, people will step up to do it. Our strategic council fund is being used to pay extra on this building, um, which could have been used for us to make things happen and didn't get to happen. Um, and we could get creative if we needed to with ideas, and they can get creative with the money for that. So I, I'd like to make a motion to cut that. Um, and that's my two cents.
I'd second that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to cut the funding for the arts commission and by Councilwoman Kestie, and it's seconded by Councilman Henderson. Any discussion on that?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So with the Planning and Business Development Committee, we sat down with a lot of local business owners, and we discussed what they felt the challenges were to Seidra Woolley. What they thought would help, uh, us generate more revenue from sales, get more businesses into our community, and the, the number one thing that came up over and over again was the beautification of the city. And I understand that there's outside organizations that might help to work on that. But right now, taking a small, small sliver of the city budget so that we can try to help put towards that beautification, showing that the city is also committed to making sure that it looks a little bit nicer, trying to find ways to beautify it so that we are fulfilling those needs and wants from the community, from the business owners that might come and invest here and help us generate more sales tax revenue, keep that actually here in the city instead of people driving over to Burlington or Mount Vernon. Um, I think that that has more value than the, the ten thousand dollars, if it's spent well. Um, so I would be in favor of keeping it there, seeing what they come up with to do for it. I wouldn't be opposed to, to saying that the council has to give the final blessing, but I would like to keep the funds allocated for that.
My, my thought process behind that ten thousand, um, dollars in, in beautifying, if the ideas that are coming through are to put ten thousand dollars worth of taxpayer dollars on the city sidewalks so that you can see graffiti art when it rains, um, I'm, I'm not for using taxpayer dollars for things such as that, and I don't think the ten thousand dollars is going to beautify our city enough. At some point, the local businesses have to put forth effort as well, which they are very much doing. Um, and so I don't think it's worth it.
As far as that, that project, that is, that is the, um, chamber. That's not the arts commission.
I think those bottles are about twenty-five bucks, so.
Uh, yeah, if I may, um, on the, the notion of, of that particular one, but also along with other ones, the, uh, I believe with the strategic planning fund, um, the arts commission could I believe with the strategic planning fund, the arts commission could bring just about anything before the council and say, yeah, this is an idea we've had, here's a concept drawing, let's do that. I know that people on this council have brought back concept drawings, ideas and out of our own time. And so it's not terribly hard to make those ideas up and present them. And at that point have like, oh, this is a projected cost to that. And, and even individuals on the council or other people from the community have also done that. So we probably don't need the $10,000 allocated to that. I talked to Bill about, you know, private industry versus government industry and we had a pretty good conversation about that. And I come from private industry and I look at sustainability and I look at how do I take my profit, turn that back into the employees and a better business and increase my profit. If I'm not taking in revenue or if I'm spending more than I'm making, then I'm actually going to have to either raise my cost or I'm going to have to go out of business. And if I raise my cost, people aren't going to want to buy it. So we talked about 11 members on the public works being CECL, CECL certified erosion and spill control lead. You really would only see like maybe two or three on a dirt work firm, right? Moving actual dirt and that's dealing with stormwater, things like that and making sure during the construction project that they are practicing best management practices. So there, it's not really necessary to have everyone done. So each one draining is about 1,100 dollars. And if we have 11 done, that's substantial and we can reduce that down to two or three and then have the backups. But they only visit the site once and then they work with the crews about, you know, developing those. So those are other areas. Chemical is going up 67% for inflation and kind of seeing like 67% for inflation, that's, are we looking at alternatives? Do we have backup? Are we buying, you know, do we, do we have a way to combat that? That's definitely price gouging almost in a way to see from one year over the next 67% increase and the only note is inflation. Now, in that, I do want to say that this budget is extremely detailed considering what we've seen in the past from 20,000, from 2008 to 2019, even 2023. The way you guys went through with the line items and the comments and all of that stuff, there is a lot of information in there. It's overwhelming in, in a lot of cases because it's a 108-page budget versus the old ones that were, you know, one page with a graph and then it have, you know, 80 pages in the book, but there would be a lot of dialogue and then some graphs. And this one's just straight font, seven data. But I, I do see that there are ways we can cut in that 10,000 from the arts. You know, if we save 6,800 on CECL, if we save another, you know, $3,000 on office supplies for, we looked at possible desks, bookshelves, things like that for this waste treatment. But we just spent 350 on each break room chair for that place not too long ago. And that was a very tough expenditure to say, you know, and I think people remember my discussions with Mark on that weren't, weren't really, I just didn't receive that information well because it was so expensive, you know, 850 for a love seat in the lobby, things like that. So I know that we can change. My, my thought is that we have this ending balance that we just talked about, 22 million and it's not really allocated, it's a rollover, it's there. Within another year in 2026, it'd be 27 million. How is it that 700 are shaving money from will not be possible? I'm not saying that, you know, obviously, well, since, since we have this, we should shave, but you mentioned that it would, it would break the bank. So do we have that in reserve or? That's, I don't understand how that, how that works out. Like we, we can't shave anything off the budget because we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to survive and then we have all of this in reserves.
We generally balance the budget from year to year. So that is the accumulation of years and years of cash. So, you know, you mentioned 20, you know, 22 and 26 million dollars, but a large, a large amount of that are in the utility funds. So sewer fund is 5 million, sewer capital projects is 2.4. So those generally have big projects upcoming that we're basically saving that money for those large projects so that we don't have to rely on debt, which has an interest rate. So we're paying less interest right now. You know, we're gaining some interest holding those funds. The other big one we hold cash in, $4 million is our equipment replacement. So right now, we don't need, in the next two years, we don't need to make any purchases of fire engines that are the, probably the most costly vehicle the city purchases. But we're building up that fund over time so that whenever we do make that purchase, we have the money. It doesn't have to come straight out of a one year's general fund budget. So those are the largest ones. Last time, we also talked about some of our reserve funds, which we build money up in those funds and then spend it on projects. So our real estate excise tax, building maintenance, park impact fees, those types of things, they all hold, hold a reserve in, in those funds. You know, we also have some money in the, what you just passed, the 1590, the House Bill 1590 that we're gonna be spending down. So holding those money for projects. So instead of looking at the 26 million dollars that the city is estimated to have in cash and investments, I would recommend looking at individual funds and seeing what's the cash need of that fund. And particularly the general fund. So we estimate that we'll have a cash balance at the end of, of $4 million. So, you know, that, that's a much different number than 26 million in comparison. We also think about with the general fund, the cash flow need in that fund. We've talked about before that property tax is a big part of the general fund's revenue. And that money comes in in two big chunks. I mean, it trickles in throughout the year, but in two big chunks when property taxes due. So a part of holding that cash is to get us in between the, between the two lulls. So right now, we're, we are at a high in getting in property tax, but we're not going to get our next, our next spike of that until April of next year. So having those fund balances also ensures that we're cash solvent for those ebbs and flows.
So my final, final thing on, kind of touching base with what Councilman Henderson said, I think everybody up here has expressed reducing the budget to the bare bones and you guys have expressed, it's great interest of you and you're actually documenting everything you're doing, line item by line item in here. But seeing the, if we're reducing things and then the budget actually gets bigger, that's to me is like, oh, I'm looking forward to the workshop, seeing how that all works out. And, and I know you guys are there for us to help us understand that. But it would be nice, you know, if, and if, I'm just thinking the last 10 years, we saved 3% into account, we could, you know, pay for most of that Jones John Liner road. We're, we're kind of at the beck and call of Olympia and as we saw with the, you know, HB 1590 proposal for the RFP, we're, you know, we, we can only do what the Department of Commerce tells us we can do, even though they're a non-elected body. We don't have to if we had our own funding, but if we want funding, we've got to do what they tell us to do. If we had money, we, we would be able to maybe do more. I would say if there's a way to get that fund, something set aside where in 10 years, if we need to make a type of Jones John Liner connection and we're getting vetoed by their, by our governor, we can just go forward with it. That'd be cool. I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. First, Councilman Cock and then Councilman Loy.
Yes, on the arts commission fund, it just seems more logical to give the arts commission a line item that they can work with instead of having, just bring us whatever to the council. Is it two, is there limit 200 dollars, 200,000 dollars? So it's something they can start to work with. As long as the council has final improvement, approval on what is being spent, we can, if they bring us something in that 10,000 we don't like, we, we say no. And then if the 10,000 isn't spent, we find something else for it. It just seems like ad hoc budgeting, which I'm opposed to. Thank you.
Okay. And Councilman Loy?
Yes, I, I just wanted to ask you, you were mentioning different funds and stuff, sewer fund and all that stuff. Is my understanding that you can't take that and move it to someplace else? It has to stay with the sewer and the number of those other ones you named are in the same boat? You can't move them, spend them on other things? Is that correct?
Yes, you can't, and very specifically, you can't move utility money to any other fund unless it is in benefit to the sewer fund. So, and that's true for stormwater and solid waste. And you can't move money in between those either. What you can do and what the city does do is that those utilities pay the other funds for their services. So like the sewer fund benefits from having an accounts payable process. So the sewer department pays for a portion of the accounts payable process. The sewer fund benefits from having IT. So they pay for a portion of IT, tho, those types of things. So you can do that. The other thing that you can do is you can put a tax on your own utility. So the other utilities that the city doesn't provide, the city has a tax on those utilities and that money can go into the general fund. And so similarly, the city has a tax on our own utilities and that money can go into the general fund. So I, I wanted there to be a short answer and for that answer to be, yes, you're right, but there's a long, there's always a long answer. But generally, we can't just take money from a utility fund and move it to a different fund.
My understanding, the only thing you can really do, the way I look at it, is you can loan from here to here, but you got to give it back with interest in a short period of time.
Yeah. And that's not a, a best practice to consistently do that, but only do it in a significant time of need.
Madam Mayor, if you were to do like a road project, Jones John Liner, it involves stormwater along the side, you know, culverts. It also involves wastewater enhancements under the road possibly and hookups. It would involve maybe if we have lighting or cameras up there, some IT, wouldn't we be able to like separate something? And that's just an example, obviously, we're not doing that. But if we have a project, we can basically break it out into portions and pay for it with various funds.
Bill can answer that for you.
Can I answer that? So yes, we do do that and it's very common, for instance, with Jones John Liner or any other road project, you'll have what's called bidding schedules. So we'll have many times a stormwater schedule as well as maybe a sewer schedule separate from the street's schedule. And each one of those would either potentially come from that particular utility fund or maybe even they're separated by different grants. And I can only spend grants on stormwater if I had a water quality grant. So that schedule in that, in that project would let me apply that grant to that schedule. I may have another grant that's paying for the streets and I pay for that schedule. So yes, we do actually, and it depends on the road project too, also you got to remember. But we do separate, it's very common to separate our projects, those projects specifically, into different schedules. And some, some of those schedules get sales tax applied to them and other schedules don't. Transportation funds are generally exempt from sales tax. But for instance, if we had a telecommunications portion of that project, that would get taxed and it gets taxed. And so we have to have separate schedules to keep track of what gets taxed and what doesn't as well.
Thank you. Councilman Cock?
Yeah, just an observation. I can't remember, Kelly, what you said, the percentage of the budget was salary, but I've been here long enough and been part of, you know, their negotiations with several unions and those in my short experience don't tend to go down, the salaries. So that, that has an effect on the budget. And I also want to be careful about making things. I worked at newspapers where they didn't do reduction in forces, but when people left, they didn't fill the position. So the, and it ended up with people doing two or three jobs and leaving. So just keep in mind in terms of our staff, we want to maintain a level of support for them that will also include job satisfaction that leads to job retention. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilman Henderson.
Thank you. So I think a lot of the problem of what I see for a, funding a lodging tax, or I'm sorry, funding a art, arts commission out of the general fund is I, I don't see that as being an appropriate means of getting that funded. I don't think anybody says they don't want to have an arts commission. I think, I think the issue is that we don't want to fund it out of the general fund. There's other avenues, there, there's other avenues that they could be funded by. They could, they could apply with the lodging tax advisory committee, which there is nothing about an arts commission that is not tourism related. Everything about it is. And that, that is a wonderful, would be a wonderful use of funds for lodging tax funding. I mean, I, I see we have appropriated 117,000 dollars of lodging tax money for 2024. It drops off to 35 and 25 and 26, but it's hard to know, right? So, I mean, we're getting a new hotel, so we're gonna, we're gonna see that money go up. It's not going to go down. It's, the revenue from that's going to go up. So that, that's where I see. It, it's more of a, how are we going to fund it? I don't want to fund it out of a, out of the general fund and just say, hey, we got, we got you guys allotted for two years, 10 grand a pop and then, you know, maybe there might be an opportunity to get more funding somewhere else. I say, I say we've, hopefully their commission will decide that they want to, they want to pursue that lodging tax money, which I would highly recommend that they do, is come in and hopefully we can get those two members from businesses to actually go through and go through the approval process and stuff like that. That, that would be, that would be a very appropriate use of those funds, I think. I don't need to remind anybody here that we are all elected to represent our taxpayers and this is one of our most important duties is getting this budget passed and getting it passed as fairly as possible with, in relation to the services that we need to provide and also in relation to, to pass savings on to the taxpayers. We're going into another public hearing, a third one, I've never done this before, three in one night, talking about another issue. And, you know, when you, when you talk about, well, you know, in a 30, 39 million dollar expenditure budget, what's 10 grand, right? But we're also talking about raising property taxes to gain ourselves another 40,000 dollars in 2025 and then maybe some in 2026. So if we can, if we can make these savings here and that's, that's all, that's all I'm wanting. I'm not, I'm not saying we need to cut five police officers and we need to get rid of half the fire department and, you know, get rid of all the parks guys. I, I never once brought up anything about, anything about salaries. I was talking about operating budgets of goods, materials, supplies and other such things, not, not people. Cause, you know, you, Bill, you can't just say, you know what, I want to pay my engineer $10,000 less this year. You can't even touch that. If you have a spreadsheet, I'm sure, I'm sure that box is completely locked out for you, just like, just like it would be for other people. So I, again, and I'm looking forward to the workshop, I would like to see our expenditures across the board go down. But by way of this motion that's on the table right now, I think that their funding source needs to come from what it was intended, which is what the lodging tax fund is designed for. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, go ahead.
I would actually support that as well. I don't think that it should be coming from the general fund. I'm not saying the arts commission has no place in Cedar Woolley. I'm saying that it should be funded separately and even if it needs to come in for a budget amendment, but for a special project, that that could be done. But when we're looking at pinching pennies here in a budget and passing a very hefty budget, in my opinion, and then turning around in the next public hearing and talking about raising property taxes and we're here to represent the people, I think we have big questions to sit here and ask ourselves. And those questions are, are we doing the right thing for our community and where does that sit? And I personally, in talking to constituents in, in my ward, cannot in my heart of hearts at this moment, say that increasing any property tax would be acceptable when we talked about reducing the cost by cutting some specific things at the last session, which would have made up that amount. in property taxes that we were told we were possibly going to have to increase. And so, by making those cuts, we were doing the right thing by the people, and saying that we're making these cuts, and so, we should not, in theory, have to raise those property taxes in order to keep things moving. But instead, the budget is coming back significantly higher after we've made those cuts, and still asking for property tax here in the next, um, line item. And so, I'm having a really hard time stomaching that, um, sitting up here and, and going from an unbalanced budget the first time around to a semi-unbalanced budget with nothing fully making complete sense, and thinking that we're coming in today for answers and making sense, and now we're coming back, and it's making even less sense to me. I fully appreciate the amount of time and effort put in in the line items and all of that. That makes, that, that is wonderful. But, how we are increasing so significantly when we were specifically up here asking things to be deducted is, it leaves me at a loss, and, and quite frustrated, to be completely honest with you. Um, and when I go back and have phone calls and, and, um, discussions with people when I'm going through town, I have to explain that. And that makes it incredibly difficult, um, from, from my perspective, because I don't have a clear answer for them, and I, I honestly can't disagree with the, with the community and, and some of the feedback that I've received in regards to budgeting and that sorts of things. And so, I would, um, I would second and support removing that ten thousand dollars from, from that. And then, you, and at the last meeting, I even went as far as to remove the, uh, full-time position of, uh, another permitting tech, um, that was brought forward as a full-time position, because that is a, um, it was brought on to be a temporary position while we do the comp plan, and it, to my understanding, at this point, there actually is, is no full-time job description for that unless that's been made up since between now and then, um, because that was to be funded for the 2025 comp plan, um, doing fifty percent of that work, and in two thousand, and that comp plan is going to be finished, and then what is that individual going to be doing? What is that position supposed to be doing, uh, to relieve the additional stresses of that specific department? And so, I would even suggest that that, that sorts of things be pulled, and that come back as an additional amendment, a budget amendment in the future with justification for the department itself, so that we can then clearly identify that for our constituents in our community, save our costs here on our bottom line, and adjust it if we see it necessary, and being able to help the department. But, um, we have to tighten our belts. There are a lot of people that are currently losing their jobs. They're not getting pay increases. We have community members that are on fixed income, social security, their public, their utility rates are going up at no fault of ours. We're doing everything we can from that, uh, standpoint to save them costs. Um, and that has to do with dumping fees and other fees that are completely outside of our control. So, the least we can do as a city and as elected officials is to simply ask for the bottom line to be cut and for us to tighten our belts here. And I honestly see absolutely nothing wrong with Councilman Henderson's, um, request for a review of, of cuts at, at, you know, one, two and a half, three percent, you know, in various things. Not people, not, not those operating expenses. Those things are not, not being touched, but just basic operations expenses, as if you would manage your own household, right? If you're not getting a raise at home, and your utilities are going up, your garbage is going up, you've got daycare to pay for, you have all these things to pay for, where do you have to take your cuts? What do you have to do, right? There's needs and there's wants, and there's all sorts of things that we don't want to cut, because we like to have that excess. We like to have that wiggle room. But, at the end of the day, we have to balance our budgets, right? We have to balance our budgets at home, we have to balance our budgets in the private sector, and we definitely need to be budgeting accordingly at the government level, where we are ultimately responsible for the services and needs of our own community. And so, that, that's where I'm at right now.
And just for the record, we did hear you say, um, Councilwoman Diamond, that you did with the, the permitting position, that you did want it to be reassessed when the grant, uh, ran out, and then come forward with it and, and do an amendment. So, I want you to know, we did hear that, and we have made note of that. So, thank you. Um, yes, go ahead.
If I, if I can just interject, I think there was some confusion there. Um, what we proposed to do was to add a halftime permit tech position, but, uh, in our trimming of the budget, we took that out. So, it, it's not the permit tech position that we were talking about. You've mentioned permit tech.
Madam Mayor, I just had a clarification, or, or request of clarification from Councilwoman Diamond. Um, you had mentioned that there were significant things that had gone up from this read to last read. Um, I had mentioned with that question from Councilmember Henderson that that was likely primarily, like, the total was from you, the utility funds, which we, um, had need for additional assessment from those. Other than the utility funds, did you see something that was, that, that increased? 'Cause we didn't have a lot of increase outside of that.
I guess my frustration comes with a lot of the likely's and we don't know, right? Like, so, when the, it's brought forward and there's questions being asked, it's, well, it's likely coming from this, or it's likely coming from that. But, when we're looking at the budget, budgets are numbers, and so, where is that increase? What is that increase? Why is that increase, right? And so, when you're, when you're looking at the bottom line, and you look at that, and then you have to go through a hundred and four pages of very specific line items to try to figure out exactly where it is and what it, it, what it's, what it's saying, that becomes very, very frustrating. Um, I've, I've got a couple constituents that are like, I don't have time to go through this hundred and four pages of, of this, that, and the other, but I'm looking, I open up and I look at the bottom line, and I see this just drastically changed, but I thought we were asking for cuts. Um, I thought that there was those discussions. And so, the, those sorts of things become very, very difficult to navigate. And I realize that you're dealing with sales taxes and moving numbers and those sorts of things, but, um, it, it becomes very difficult and very hard, um, to continue with the, well, it's likely this and it could be that, because it's, it's gotta come from somewhere. And so, that, that's just, that's just where it's, that's just where my frustration is at. And so, I'm, I'm hoping that with the, with the budget review in our, our session, that we'll have, we'll have a little bit more clarity.
Yeah, and, and just to your point, there are hundreds of pages of line items, so that, that is my only reason for not knowing every line item in the thousands of, thousands of line items, that, that there's multiple things that change a little bit. Um, and that's why we try and highlight all of those, all of those things for council, and that's why I mentioned, you know, if there's something specific you want answered in the, in the public meeting, it's super helpful for me to, to get that information, um, ahead of time, so I can be, provide as much as I can at this, at this meeting.
So, Kelly, just for clarification, is the budget, is the budget or is not the budget balanced as it stands right now?
It is balanced.
It is balanced as it stands right now?
Okay.
Yes.
From what I'm seeing, we have a difference about three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars between the last budget we were given and the current budget we were given. If I go up two line items, I'll see the Equipment Replacement Fund, that's gone up. Let's see here. Two hundred, two hundred and thirty roughly, thousand? So, that takes out a decent chunk of our change just in that, that single page. That's two, three line items up. So, comparing them side by side is handy. Um, it's challenging to do, I get it. I like that you, Kelly, give the breakdown at the beginning, where it makes it a little bit simpler for us to go through, um, and not have to sift through the entire thing to try to figure out what department, 'cause then I can go and see, you know, hey, who's, who's buying something with the Equipment Replacement Fund. So, I do appreciate that breakdown. Um, it definitely simplifies it. Uh, I know that there is a lot to go through on here, and the highlights help as well. So, thank you for doing that. Please continue.
Yes, go ahead, Charlie.
So, I, I think, uh, Councilwoman Diamond's, uh, comments were related to the Assistant Planner position. I just wanted to clarify, 'cause I wanna make sure that we understand. Uh, the last meeting, you were, I think, referencing the Assistant Planner position, which is temporary tied to the Comprehensive Plan.
Right, sorry.
I, I just wanted to be crystal clear for all of us.
Clarifying Assistant Planner, not Permitting.
And it would be, I think, helpful to have-
That individual was doing, or that position is doing permitting as well.
Yeah.
That was my, yes.
No worries.
No, um, no, there, there's a, he can help with the permit tech, but he's doing other planning. He's an Assistant Planner, so he's doing other planning duties.
Okay.
Yeah.
He's actually helping with the, uh, comp plan, is he not?
Comp plan and, and other, um, current planning, uh, things, uh, reviewing, um, applications and so forth, with, with Nicole and me, yeah.
And business licenses. He does all the approvals for business licenses.
What we were talking about in permit tech, um, is that for this budget, I had proposed that we add a halftime permit tech position. It's an entirely different thing, um, in, in addition to the existing permit tech. But, in our effort to cut the budget, we took that halftime permit tech request out.
Yeah, and, but I think that actually Councilwoman Diamond was referencing what she saw within the budget, which is actually the Assistant Planner.
Right.
Correct, okay.
I would recommend we get a motion on that at some point as well, just so we can be clear when we bring the budget back, if it's in or out.
Okay. Um, well, I think what Councilwoman Diamond had recommended, and I'm speaking for you here, so correct me if I'm wrong, but as I understood her last council meeting, when that funding ran out and we were making a request to bring this person on, that, at that time, there'd be an amendment, there'd be a discussion.
Yeah, and that, that funding, um, is, uh, actually, I think it's available all the way through December of next year, but I, I know that, uh, it is for June for sure. So, um, I'll have more information on that as we get after the, after the first year. The grant, the grant actually runs through, uh, December twenty-five, I believe.
Okay. So, um, I, I, before we get too far, we- We do have a motion. Yeah, so we do have a motion on the table, and that is to remove, uh, the ten thousand dollars for the art commission. It was made by, the motion was made by Councilwoman Kestie, and second, by Councilman Henderson. Any more discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor of removing the ten thousand dollars, say, aye?
Aye.
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 Okay. And I'm gonna see, I'm asking for a show of hands, actually, I guess, because I heard, so, can you show hands? So, we have Councilman Lavaca and Henderson and Diamond and Kestie and Loy. Okay. And those opposed to removing it, that would be Councilman Cock and Councilman Burns. Okay. So, um, motion carries to remove the ten thousand dollars for the art commission from the budget. Okay, so now, we still haven't completed, I haven't closed out the public hearing yet for the 2025-2026 biennial budget ordinance two zero eight two two four. Have we completed that? And if so, I will close this, and we will move on to the next hearing. All right, so I am closing this hearing at this point at eight twenty-one. All right, and third and last hearing is for the, um, 2025 property tax. So, um, Kelly, is that you again?
That's me again.
All right, 'cause I'm not there on my page. There it is, okay.
Sorry, closed out. Um, all right, so, uh, this is for, this is the first public hearing for the 2025 property tax levy, but the second read of the ordinance. Um, so, if we, if we just go down, uh, two pages, I think, Woody, right there, yeah. So, again, we've included some information that, uh, we've had in other items as well, but just wanted to have, um, a document that you could take, take away if you had any questions. I also have a printout, I believe, at the dais for you as well. So, this is the same thing from last time, how is property tax calculated, kind of the long answer and the short answer. Uh, also provided some additional information about bank capacity, which was a question. Um, and if you have any, um, questions about it in the examples, I'm happy to answer that for you. But, I wanted to provide an update of some of these tables, um, since we do have final numbers from the county. So, for 2025 budgeted levy, that table shows what our budgeted levy would be for 2025, um, with the one, the allowable one percent increase. You can see it there in blue. Um, so, we, we pass the budgeted levy year to year, so I've provided the 2026 information, um, just because we're doing a two-year budget, but the ordinance will only be for, um, 2025. So, we had some updated numbers there. In the original, we had estimated, uh, new construction for 2025 to be sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, it is a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. We also received a refund levy, which I've included some information from the county assessor about what, what that amount is. So, that's, um, that's the breakdown for property tax. If the council chose not to do the one percent, uh, all those numbers would remain the same except for the forty-eight thousand dollars would be removed. We provided four scenarios for 2026. The first scenario here is if we took the one percent in 2025, and we took the one percent in 2026. For reference, I've also included here, uh, you see that bottom number in the first table is the 2025 plus the 2026 budgeted levy, just so we can do some comparisons with the other scenarios. Um, in that second table to the left, uh, the next scenario is if we didn't take the twenty, if we took zero in 2025 and, um, took the one percent in 2026, plus the bank capacity. Um, and the bank capacity is there in the, kinda lighter blue. Um, and then we have other scenarios as well. I won't go, go through all of them, but you can see down below, uh, the difference, uh, what the total revenue difference is from if the city chose to take the one percent in both years. Um, the next thing I wanted to talk about was some deadlines. So, uh, we need to pass the property tax ordinance by November thirtieth, and get all of that information to Skagit County Assessor's Office by that deadline. So, just wanna keep that in mind. On the next page, last time council had requested, uh, some impacts of what taking the one percent would look like. So, I've provided three home values, and what the levy rate currently is for 2024, and what these homes paid for the Cedar Woolley's portion of property tax. So, you can see that amount there. We've done a rough estimate of what we think those assessed properties would be for the 2025, um, tax collection, and what the levy rate would be if we passed the one percent, uh, and how much property tax Cedar Woolley's portion would be collected. The annual increase for those three, for that first value of home is ten dollars and five cents, which is eighty-four cents a month, if you spread it over, you know, twelve months. Um, for a four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar home, it would be fifteen dollars and eighty-eight cents, which is a dollar thirty-two a month. And for a six hundred fifty-one thousand dollar home, it's twenty-one dollars and fifty-two cents, which is a dollar seventy-nine. Um, so, hopefully, those scenarios answer some of the, some of the council's questions. Um, a couple of the assumptions made in these numbers, uh, is that the increase in value for homes in Cedar Woolley, on average, based on the, uh, Skagit County Assessor's numbers, is one point four percent. So, that's what I plugged in, um, on those calculations above, and I showed my work. So, if anyone wants to check my math, they're, uh, happy to, happy to do that. Um, but just wanted to provide that assumption, and to say that it will vary for individual homes. Guaranteed to vary. There's probably not one home that the assessed value increased exactly one point four, four percent. Um, it's, it's likely that some homes actually decreased in value on the county's, um, assessment, and some homes increased. Um, so, we're just taking the average, the average there, um, in what we use to calculate our numbers. Uh, there was also a request to discuss, um, that Cedar Woolley is not the only portion of the property tax. There was also a request to discuss that Sejowoli is not the only portion of the property tax. So we've included here that approximately 28% of a residence property tax bill is for the city of Sejowoli. And the school district is, 28% goes to the school district and 24% goes to the state of Washington, and that that can vary a little bit based on home by home. But I did include here on the next slide, just an example of one property's tax in all the different jurisdictions that goes into that property tax. You can see on this example that Sejowoli is $796.44 for 2024, and this is the $304,000 property. We also had a request to highlight, again, we did this last year, is to highlight the property tax exemptions. Homeowners who may fall into one of these exemptions can go on the county website and apply. Once they apply, we can see that from the, the county's website, and we can apply a discount to the city utility tax as well. They don't have to do it twice, once with the county and once with the city. So that information is available there. And then the last thing, just want to highlight again, based on what council had requested, was that the increase, the one percent increase approved by council represents a $10 to $21 annual increase for homeowners, depending on their property value for Sejowoli, within Sejowoli city limits. And that's all the information I have for you.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. So I'm going to open this up to the public, and I see Judy, that you wanted to make public comment. Do you still want to make public comment? Okay.
Oh, yes, I do.
Okay, come on up.
Thank you again for letting me talk, but I have a question, first of all. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
To what Kelly mentioned? I'm assuming when you're talking a one percent increase, if you're at a quarter right now, you're going to be collecting one and a quarter from us, right? One percent increase on top of what you're currently collecting. Is that correct?
Do you want me to answer public comment?
Yeah, do, go ahead.
It's not quite as simple as that, of course. The short answer, no, there may not be a short answer, is one percent, so Sejowoli has a dollar amount, let me actually pull up. We, we increase the bucket of money we collect from.
Right.
So roughly, it comes out to one percent more of the city's portion of your property tax, but.
So it's not a full, okay, I get it.
But it varies, it varies because if your assessed value increased or decreased as proportion to the rest of the homes. So an individual homeowner may pay the same, or it could be less.
Okay, okay, I understand what you're saying, but it currently, right now, when I lump all of your tax levies together, okay, for Skagit County, the schools, the, help me here, all the things you mentioned, they get split between. We're currently at 9.286% of your assessed value is being taxed. We bought our home 12 years ago here in Sejowoli, and we all know prices have gone up. I love my home, but honestly, you guys add another one percent on top of that, we're going to be over 10% combined on all of those being split, if I'm understanding it correctly. And my home has been assessed this year another 40,000. It doesn't go down, it constantly goes up. We are on the fixed income that Julia said a lot of people are. I don't get emotional, but.
Okay, it's okay, it's okay.
When, I'm not going to get emotional because I'm upset about this. You know, you planned for your retirement, and honestly, right now, we are getting taxed out of our homes. I mean, is what I feel like. We're currently paying 5,700 a month. If I use the same levy rate that the whole combined is taxing us, we'll be at 61. If you guys raise it, the one percent, school levy, whatever, and we do go up, we're going to be more like 6,400 to 6,500 a year in taxes. And, I mean, I love my home, it's 120 years old. We have to maintain easements, we have to maintain trees that are on the easement that are huge. Our tree is 130 years old, is what we've been told. To limit is $6,000 bid. What I'm getting at, and also I take my dogs for walks, I can't safely walk down the sidewalks in Sejowoli.
Yeah.
Okay? And to put those items that you guys do, and I'm not blaming you guys, it's been this way for years, it sounds like, that all that is a homeowner's responsibility. I don't feel as a taxpayer that I'm getting much in return, and I don't want to say that lightly because our schools are important, fire and, and police are extremely important, all of that is important. But when you're putting out 6,400 and then you have to put out more on top just to maintain your home, it's getting to the point of being ridiculous. I researched up in Watcom County, they're at a seven percent rate. My kids have more expensive homes than I do, and they pay less in taxes. Something's wrong, guys, I don't know what, but there's a lot of fixed income people. We make a damn good income on our retirement, but it's getting to the point where we're getting squeezed. Medical insurance for my husband increased 54% a month to a $1,500 premium. That's what your citizens are dealing with, are things like that, not just putting food on the table, the things that Sarah mentioned that we can't control. And I don't want to get upset and emotional, but it's, it's hard when you see your money going and you don't see the return for your money. Okay, that's all I'm saying, just think about what we get in that budget. You guys talk about, I, I literally have tripped on the sidewalks. I've tripped on our street. Fourth Street needs to be repaved, it needed to be repaved, the concrete taken out and paved for the last 12 years. And the only thing it does is you guys allow the buses to drive down it and rock that road to hell and back. So I'm frustrated, that's what I'm saying, I'm just frustrated. And think about that when you're voting for an increase, because I feel for the people that are not making it at all. We can make it, but it's, it's getting tougher, is what I want to say. And there's no one in the room except for one witness and the rest of you, so I can say all this, and I'm way over my time, so.
That's okay.
Thank you guys for listening, but I really want you guys to hear what I hear from neighbors and neighborhoods that I, you know, are important. I live in the old neighborhood, you know, of Sejowoli, and I think the historical homes that we have, we need to save them. The historical trees, same thing, or they're going to rot and start falling down. And it's really hard for the homeowners to take care of it all, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Judy, thank you. Anyone else in the room wants to make comment? Okay, is there anybody online who would like to make comment? Okay, seeing and hearing none. I'm going to move from the public comment to the council for questions or comments. And I see Henderson, you have your light on right away, yeah.
Kelly, for the 2025 one right here, the refund levy of $17,880, that's just something that we get back from the county, right? If I was, if I was reading the rest of the report right, that, that's an automatic, that's coming back to us, that the county is, is a holdover?
Yes, and unfortunately, I don't have a lot of information about that, other than what the county provided, but that's my understanding as well.
So that requires no action on our part, that money's just coming?
I included it in the ordinance to, just out of caution, but I believe, yes.
Okay, and then when you brought up the property tax exemptions that go through the county, this is something that's of particular interest to me because I've had a lot of people ask me about it. I know, so when you get the property tax exemption, that's an exemption on your property taxes, but also on our city utility rates and our city utility services such as trash and sewer, right?
Yeah, I don't believe there, I, I think the county has tiers of exemptions, so I don't believe anyone, any property pays zero property tax.
Correct.
So it's a reduction. And yes, and whenever you receive that exemption, you are eligible for the reduction in your city bill for, for garbage recycling, stormwater and sewer. Yes.
What about?
Exemption lasts, I believe, two years, although the county assessor will be here at the next meeting, so we can always confirm that with him as well.
Are the other utility rates that we tack on, PUD, PSC, Comcast, all the cable providers, are those rates also discounted with the property tax exemption that you will get from the county?
We have no control over those rates that they charge their customers.
I thought we, I thought we charged a tax on all those services that were provided through our city.
We do charge a utility tax based on the dollar amount, so if someone receives an exemption, their bill will be lower. I believe their tax would be the same, same percentage, but on a lesser dollar value. So the dollar amount that they would pay in utility tax would be less.
Okay, thanks for the clarification, because it's hard, it's usually like on a Saturday that somebody calls me and asks me about that, so I don't always get the person who does it in the same room with me when I get to ask these questions. And then the other thing was, what would this money be going towards if we elected to increase this property tax? What, what would we be using this money for it? Why is it needed?
We included this in the budget. It goes, the property tax gets distributed to three funds? Prime, the two primary places property tax goes is the general fund and the parks fund. So like we talked about before, that the general fund and parks fund, we kind of consider them, the general fund together because they have the same unrestricted funding sources, so it gets included in that revenue line item for those two funds. So there's not one specific, you know, $48,000 thing that we have added to the budget in direct connection with the property tax. It's the overall unrestricted revenue sources in the general fund and parks fund.
So is it showing this, and I know, I understand what you mean about not showing like the $48,683 like in a particular fund, but is this worksheet that we have to go off of, is that showing that allocation of the one percent in, in this worksheet that we just did a budget hearing on?
Yes, so.
It's already showing it?
Yes, it's showing it with one percent.
Okay.
The, the budget that was presented at this meeting includes one percent.
And then for 2026, is you, have you factored that in yet with these three other different options that were available for like the bank capacity?
Yeah, it includes the 2025 at one percent and the 2026 at one percent. So the, the first two options presented in the property tax document.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Cock?
Yes, so Kelly, without the one percent, the budget could be balanced, right? We wouldn't have a problem with that.
If you took the money out of the general fund, the current general fund revenues currently exceed, let me pull that up. Jen, I, I think it's a hundred and, let me just get the exact number for you. Sorry for the delay. There's lots of pages of the general fund, as you noted. Currently, the 2025, the general fund is at a positive $195,000, and 2026 is at a positive of $48,000.
So we could not take the one percent either year and still be ahead of the game, basically, right?
If you, with the current budget, if you don't take the one percent in 2025, we would still be balanced. If you don't take it in both 2025 and 2026, 2026 will be out of balance.
You do know, oh, it's hard to say, because the reason I bring that up is when I was doorbelling, the number one issue people brought to my attention was taxes and fees. And with the pressures on our utility fund, our utility fees, I, I have, I think it's, I heard from a lot of people similar to what we just heard tonight, and I think it might be problematic to use the one percent, that's just my opinion. And, oh, one other thing, too, the, the property tax exemption, every time I bring that up with people, they've never heard of it. So it'd be good somehow, I think, didn't we put it like a description of it in utility bills last year or something?
We did.
And I think it's on the website, just getting that word out to people, because I, when I tell people about it, they want, oh, well, that's great. So, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, just, I don't know, Councilman Lloyd, did you have a question?
I got my question answered.
Okay, perfect, okay, Councilman Lavaca.
That's always nice, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, you know, the property tax, I know that ours, we kind of went around about this last time, and there was a lot of discussion on the amounts and whatnot, and we finally got down after a long, long discussion about how much the actual increase is, and so it was about anywhere from $10 to $20 at the last round, so we had you put that in on this one, which is about $10 to $20 a year. Nevertheless, it, it's still another increase after we just cut two positions that we were thinking about removing and, and being able to sustain that budget at a lower level. And if we're looking at being able to, you know, not do the Arts Commission, I, I would be in favor of the Arts Commission just having, hey, draw stuff for 10,000, 15, 30,000 and get a stockpile of projects going on that you can bring before the council. That's all money that's saved, so that it does help, because like I said, as we see in our own budget, things keep going up. The insurance rates, it's increased 10% every year on our own budget. We're saying, hey, we're paying more in insurance every year. We're, you know, just raised the utility taxes a lot, we're looking at probably doing that again or we're being asked to do that again. This would be a better tax to raise than the utility tax, than the other taxes, because if something's got to be put in the budget, then it's compound interest. But, you know, on our 2024 budget that we proposed back in 2022, the original 2023, we had a revenue source of 35.5 million, and we had a budget expenditures at 38.2 million. And then the 24, we were at, well, we won't do the 24 yet, but the 23, we ended up having our, that's the other way around. So for 2023, the revenues was actually at 36.3 million and the expenditures were at 39.8. And we were able to save that in 2023 by reducing that to 25 on our, or 35 on our revenue, but we also brought down our expenditures as well. However, in, we're. However, and we're still, you know, down, but in the 2024, which we're currently in right now, back in 2022, we anticipated it being at 29 for our revenue and then our expenditure's at 31 million. And then in the amendment, the last amendment that we did, it was up to 39.7 million revenue and 43.58 expenditure. So we were going to be 3 million, you know, in the negative on that one. So even if we're like projecting of having this in there and our budget's really, really tight, there's still a very huge likelihood that by the time we get to 2026, even though it looks balanced, because that looked really balanced when we first passed it back in 2022, chances are we're going to be pretty far out, too. So it's more of the cause to tighten up the budget and then know that, you know, the views that are expressed here are expressed all the time, all the time, because insurance rates are huge, they're going up, property taxes are going up. We're using money for $500,000 for, you know, consulting for climate change that's telling us, hey, go electric vehicle, give me my check, you know? It doesn't make sense. And we've got to figure out, how do we get a hold of this for the community? So I wouldn't be in favor of passing it if we can hope.
Just one comment about that. The 2023, again, I would recommend viewing the budget fund by fund because although overall we may have spent $3 million more in expenditures than, in expenditures than revenues, some of that is strategically spent that way, how we talked about that we build up funds for multiple years and then have cash. And then in that one year, even though the revenue coming in that one year doesn't meet the expenditures in that one year, we've built up the cash to spend that. So it's hard to look at the budget as a whole, like the bottom line number, because of those types of things, but...
Yeah, so it's relatively the same with the general fund, and I can give you the numbers for the general, there are parks. And there, we're seeing, you know, a budget, and then when we go to do an amendment, that budget's increased. And so the general, you know, it was at 13,2 for budgeted expenses for 2024, and the last one we did was, or the first one was actually at budget expenditures of $10,700,000 where we ended up actually doing $13,200,000. So 3 million on the general fund alone. I know there's money that kind of moves around, but if it helps with the parks, because that's where the property taxes go. So we saw in relative with the parks and the general fund. We project a budget, which is very hard. You guys got a very difficult job, and I'm not saying it isn't, but it always goes up, right, sort of by the time we get there.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, so there is a recommended action. Does anybody wish to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to deny the 1% property tax increase.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. So there is a motion on the table to deny the motion to approve ordinance 208024. It's an ordinance approving the siegeable portion of the property tax levy at an increase of 1%. Any more discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
This is for both years, the motion, right? Or is it just for...
No, it's just the 2025.
So just to ask, if we got in really dire straits in 2026, we still have that option again, right? Okay.
Yes, you can never...Woody, can you go down a little bit to the 2026 numbers? Yeah, scroll down just a teeny bit more so we can see. There we go. So here is 2026. If we chose not to take the 0% in 2025, for 2026, you could take the bank capacity and the 1%. So the 1% doesn't change because it's based on your highest lawful levy. So you could see in 2026, we could collect the same amount as we would have collected in 2026 if we did take the 1% in 2025. The only thing you miss out on is you can never get that $48,000 back that we didn't levy in 2025. So you can see the difference at the bottom. There is $48,000. That's the 1% this year. That is the difference. If you choose to not take the 1%, 0% in 2025 and 1% plus bank capacity in 2026. If we didn't take the bank capacity next year and we did take the 1% next year, the difference would be $97,000. And then the last example, if you could scroll down a little bit, Woody. If you did 0% in '25, 0% in '26, no bank capacity, the difference would be $148,000. So that's the, like when Councilmember Lavaca's talking about the compoundness of property tax, that's what, that's what we're referring to.
So you're talking about, just for clarification, so the $48,000 plus, if they didn't take it, that's what we would not receive?
In 2025.
And then in, did the same thing in '26, then it's 97 plus that we will not receive?
If you don't, if the council chooses not to take 1% in 2026 and doesn't take the bank capacity, you're at that bottom one.
Okay, which is the 100 and...
Which is, can you go down a little bit, Woody?
What is it? $148,000.
$148,000.
So, yeah, so it is the compounding of it. This is what we're losing each time we don't do that.
Yeah, that's, that is the difference between what we would have gotten if we'd taken 1% each year and what we would get if we took zero both years.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
So in 2016 through 2019, we actually didn't pull any of the 1% for many, many years. But if we did it during our prosperous years, that compound interest would be collecting in our budget, right? I would think because it's the price of basically a movie out, not even that, it's about $15, $17 a year for my house. That's something that, you know, you're putting into the bank. Ultimately, property tax is a tax on the wealthy, or it's a wealth tax is what it's called. And so, you know, those are the people who own the homes, they're the ones that are going to be paying for the benefits of the community. If we were in more of a prosperous time, let's say 2025 hits and things start going down, interest rates going down, property values start going down, communities start getting better off, then yeah, we would want to start looking at collecting that and having that as a budgeted access for that compound interest going aboard. Right now, things are so tight and have been for so long, it's such a hard target to hit up any tax and have it with a straight face for the constituents.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just verification of my understanding. So we vote yes on this motion. That means that we are banking the capacity. Next year, we could take it or choose to not take it. Is that correct?
We would have to bring back an ordinance with 0% and then note in that ordinance that you want to bank the capacity. That's how you would do that.
It's not, it's not in this motion here.
Okay.
Right. This motion is just denying the motion as written, and we can come back with a separate motion.
So it would be prudent for us to leave that option open for the future if we came back with that motion? Now, just from my understanding on that, let's say we bank the capacity this year, we decide to not take it or the bank capacity next, or the capacity next year, we then bank two?
Assuming council approves that, then yes. But again, you never get back the amount for that year. So you never get back the 2025 and 2026 amount, but you can increase the 2027 amount that much more. We did do the calculation for those years, 2008 through 2023, all the years the city didn't take the 1%. The total, when we compare what the city could have taken to what the city actually took in property tax, is $1.1 million. So just wanting to give some context to that decision by council.
Thank you.
I guess that would, if we did do that, though, our constituents would be in a far worse situation right now because we would have that 1% compounded over 23 years, 1% a year, just on siegeable portion. So we, like, I, my taxes is over-doubled since I bought my house like eight years ago or something like that. And I'm sure everybody on here who owns a home experiences that. So I think we would have been in a much worse situation had we done that.
Well, we would have changed the dollar amount of the levy lid lift because our levy lidless was larger because we hadn't collected that, that 1%. So that would have been adjusted. Also, just want to note that last year, I believe, was the county assessor here last year or just at a special meeting or a special item, but noted that the largest increase in property tax over the last 10 years has actually been the school districts that, from the state, that the state pushed down on that. So although you're like a property owner's total bill over the last 10 years may feel like it's drastically increased, the siegeable portion of that is much smaller. So just wanted to provide that context. And again, the county assessor will be here next meeting, and I'm sure he'd be happy to address that as well if anyone had questions.
Okay. Are there any more questions or comments?
Just...
Okay, go ahead, Councilman.
Really quickly.
Yeah.
So that refund levy, though, you're all over that, you're going to get us that, you're going to file the paperwork to get us that $17,880 back, right? Because I know you wrote that in the ordinance and we're denying that, or we have on the table to deny that ordinance, but...
Yes.
We're not putting that money in jeopardy?
Correct.
By denying this ordinance? Okay.
Yeah, we'll just come back with a new ordinance. It'll have the same ordinance number, but a revised ordinance and it'll include that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
So in the revision, is it, so my understanding is that there has been no discussion on whether there's banked capacity or a zero for 2026. The motion itself was for 2025 of itself, and then that will be a separate discussion
2026 will be.
Next time. Is that correct? Or is that going to be written in this new ordinance for discussion?
Next year's budget, correct?
Well, we would...
The property tax 2026.
Oh, I'm sorry, it wasn't on the mic. We would include the bank, the option for the council, in the ordinance, we would include banking the capacity so the council has that option, and it's always an option in 2026. If you, if you don't bank the capacity, there's no option to use it.
Was that your question, Councilman?
Yeah. My question was whether or not the council was agreeing that they wanted, that as a council, we were wanting to have that 1% bank in for 2026 or whether it was going to be a zero and zero as per the options in here.
So that's going to, we'll bring that back.
What was going to be brought back, I guess.
Yeah, we'll bring that back next council meeting.
Well, in the next ordinance, we'll say it's banked, but you don't use the bank until the year. So if you bank the capacity this year, that means we don't get the money, we don't get the $48,000. But you have the option to use it for 2026. So at the, this time next year, we'll be talking about the 2026 property tax, and then you can decide between those three options of banking, using the banked capacity and the 1%, just the 1%, just the banked capacity. So you'll have that option in 2026 to do any of those three scenarios.
But it takes the banked and no longer is a zero, meaning that it's pulled from the taxpayers?
No, it doesn't pull from the taxpayers. In 2025, is that what you're referring to?
In 20, because you're saying it reduces it then to three options and we're provided with four here. So I just want to be clear on what we're looking for for next time.
Woody, can you scroll up a little bit?
Because we have the option of 1% and 1%, 0% and 1% banked, 0% and 1% not banked, and then a 0% and 0%. So I just want to be clear on what we're doing.
Woody, can you scroll to that one more table farther? So if the, if you don't, if this, if this gets approved, denying the 1% for 2025, option one for 26 is off the table.
Okay.
Because that's 1% 1%.
Correct.
If you, in this ordinance that we'll bring back next time, say we want to bank that 2025 capacity, then you have the option to do any of these other three. If you say, I, we don't want to put that option on the table, we then don't have that option on the left.
Okay.
I got a question on that. You take this years and you bank it. Now theoretically, you can, it can sit there for five years and you can, the council can vote on it in five years and pick that 1% back up. You don't lose it.
Yeah, you never get...
Your yearly fee, you're not going to get because you drove past that.
Right.
But in 2027 or 2030, you can suck that 1% back.
And you can see here, this top example, and Woody, you can leave it like it is, but this top example is if we took the 1% both years. And you can see in the bottom example on the left, if you take the banked capacity and the 1%, the dollar amount in 2026 is exactly the same, whether you took the 1% in 2025. So it's the same. You can get to that same dollar amount in 2026, but you just miss out on the, that one year of the $48,000. So if you did that multiple years, you know, it would add up, but you could still get to the end in five years for that one year to have the same budgeted levy dollar amount, if that makes sense. Hopefully, I'm not giving you more information to make it more confusing.
Okay. So what we have on the table, if there's no more discussion or comments, what we have on the table right now is a motion that was made by Councilwoman Henderson and signed by Councilman Cock to deny approval of ordinance 208024. And that's an ordinance approving the city siegeable portion of the property tax levy at an increase of 1%. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Okay. So that motion is not approved as written in the agenda. Okay, so I'm going to close this public hearing, the third and final public hearing, and we are going to move on to unfinished business, which is the COPS Grant Award. And this is pretty straightforward, and you went through it for us, Chief McElrath last time, talking about it. Do you want to address it again? Anything you'd like to share?
I do have a few kind of talking points. It's pretty outlined in the proposal there. When you guys, back in May, I did ask to apply for this grant. I applied for that in June. I got the award, the 30th. And in part of that, you guys asked for me to apply for a waiver. That waiver was not granted, so we got the main award, max award that can be given without the waiver of $125,000. That's to help fund a new police officer in addition to our budgeted staff currently. So, and that's over three years. So you split that over three years, it adds up to about 31% of an officer of that time. Part of this is to help build our department and increase our staffing. We are in need. It might take some time to get there as well. We do have five years to use these funds or start these funds, start that hiring that person, and quite frankly, it's going to take us some time anyway. And quite frankly, it's going to take us some time anyway because we are short-staffed. So, I don't see this as an immediate impact on, on the budget currently. I think we could, my recommendation was to be, to accept the award and figure out when I do get up to full staffing and I do hire that COPS grant or get to the point where I can hire for that COPS grant award position, is bring that back to you guys. There's, there's no kind of black flags on us if we accept or decline. And honestly, I think we can decide on that later. There's other ways that we can figure out how to fund that position and we need to figure out a way to fund additional positions for our department. We can't just stay at the same level of staffing forever. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilman Henderson?
Chief, how many vacancies do you have right now?
We currently have four and about half five.
Now five?
Five positions, yeah.
Okay. All right. So, if, if you were to get up to full staffing, staff those five, and then you would hire a sixth additional one, what would happen if you lost a person to a different department?
Nothing happens to that. That's one of the things I talked with, with the grant manager there. One of the questions that came up was, hey, if we do lose that body, say they don't fulfill, then we're still, we're still good. We're just need to hire that position. We can't, we still need to try to hire that position that we vacated. The whole point of this program is to add additional officers to your department, not remain at the same staffing.
So, you, the funds would just pause then?
Kind of complicated. I don't, I don't know. I really got a clear, clear definite answer on that, but there are a lot of variances and variables to this. There's a lot of things can happen. That, that COPS grant award hire could decide to leave within a year. That's not, I mean, that's not something we can control. So, there's a lot of things we can't control in this environment, but the whole purpose is to keep these positions. I also look at this as a morale booster. If we don't move forward with this, I, I could see more people leaving. I, I think understandably, this is a no-brainer for us. We're bringing $125,000 to you to try to fund additional positions for the department and it's not going to impact us directly right now.
Okay. Well, I'd, I'd motion authorize you to accept that grant.
Second. So, there's other questions and comments. So, we have a motion by Henderson to accept the grant. Who said second? I heard three.
Yeah, I said it and.
Okay, so I'll put Burns.
Rock, paper, scissors.
All right. So, and so I'll go to Burns. Your, your light was on.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. What I was going to say is that I support this because your staffing levels versus our population, even if you are up to staff, I know that your officers are still running to keep up. And I would appreciate having that staffing level where we can start focusing on some of the smaller things like traffic infractions that I hear the most about from people. So, I am definitely in favor of adding another officer to the force when we're able to. I would appreciate knowing a little bit more as we go on, how that's going to work with the staffing levels. You lose a person, you gain a person back. If we can just continue to collect that 125 once we've hired someone who's supposed to be for the spot. But in either regard, I would be in favor of adding that officer. If we can squeeze it out of the budget, I think that it's a worthwhile choice.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Kestie.
Thank you. So, this might be a silly question.
Sure.
But we're talking about bringing people in. Is, I don't know the whole gist of all of this, but could it be used in like sign-on bonuses to recruit people to come here or anything that would bring us more people that?
Not, not this program. This is specifically for hiring a new additional budget position. There's other ways that you can recruit from our existing budget that we would have to figure out later if that comes up.
Okay. Councilman Cock?
Yeah, I just want to say I strongly support this. Public safety is our number one, you know, thing that we have to ensure. It happens in our city and we're growing community and we have to provide adequate service. And I say, go, go for it. It is a no-brainer.
And Councilman Loy?
Yeah, I just got one question. The way I, what I heard you say, get a $125,000 grant, you hire somebody and you spend $25,000 and he quits, you still have that $100,000 in the hole for moving on?
I think it's more complicated than that. Because, I mean, you're ended up not paying a salary for that position. So, I, I think that'd be where we go back to the COPS grant award, who's monitoring the award and ask those questions at that point.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Cock?
No, I was just going to.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of authorizing Chief McElwath to accept the COPS hiring program grant in the amount of $125,000, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, congratulations. Yeah. Moving forward. Okay, where are we? That was unfinished business. Moving on to new business is the appointment of the Salary Commission, Jermaine Cornigay and Linda Crowther. So, this is mine as part of the stipulation that, of the Salary Commission, which you all approved. It is my task to bring forward names for you to approve for the Salary Commission. So, the Sejowoli Municipal Code 241005 establishes the independent Salary Commission, given authority to set salary of members for each of the council and other elected officials, city officials. 2.41.020 vacancy states that the event of a vacant spot in an office of the commissioner, the mayor shall appoint, subject to the council's approval, a person who serves in the unexpired portion of the term of the expired position. So, two members of the Salary Commission have recently moved out of city limits, so they're no longer eligible to be a volunteer for the commission. And that left two spaces available. So, the motion is to approve, approve to appoint Jermaine Cornigay and Linda Crowthers to the Salary Commission through May 31st, '26 and May 31st through '27. Any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
For me. I know that I've talked about the Salary Commission in the past and I do appreciate all the people and especially the people willing to step up and serve on a commission. I just don't, I stick to my original precedents. I don't think it's necessary, especially in light of our budget situation and we're asking you guys to cut so much. You know, I'm, for, just speaking of me, willing to give up that opportunity for an increase based upon that Salary Commission's decision and just go with it, without it. I haven't seen like a lot of data come back from them, analysis from any other places, what they're going to be doing. They've been at it for quite a few years. So, it would be, and I would suggest let's just disband the whole thing, if that's a possibility. I don't know if we can make a motion to modify that municipal code to get rid of the Salary Commission.
I would second that. Yeah, Councilman Burns, so.
I'm deeply opposed to any public official having control of their own salary. I, I think that there's serious conflict of interest with that control because we might not have interest in raising our salaries, but that doesn't mean that the next group of people who are in here won't raise it tenfold. So, part of the reason for having a Salary Commission is to ensure that we don't get that choice and that future council members don't have that choice. I would be strongly opposed to eliminating it. I am not too concerned about what I make from this because for me, it's a public service. I'm trying to help my community. That's the point to me of doing this, but I know that there are others who do not feel that way. And so, I like the safeguard and I am going to continue to support that. And I, I would be just, I don't understand the point of taking it away, especially if you're not concerned about increasing your salary.
Councilman Cock?
Yeah, again, harking back to my days as a journalist, the benefit, and you see it at all levels of government, of an independent, and the key word is independent, salary board made up of local citizens or whatever, whatever level of government, is that it's independent. And if you leave it in the hands of the local officials, and of course, I, I don't, I, I got into this also just to help my community. I'm retired, I'm fine. And it just, it looks bad, I think. You get rid of the salary, independent Salary Commission and then people say, well, who decides where the salaries go up? And it, it sounds like a conflict of interest to me.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
Thank you. I was a part of that discussion way back when and there were some council members who, you know, wanted to keep it and others were talking various ideas. I think it's become something that you stack the deck. You appoint people that you are, know will vote in your favor. And I think that passing it on to non-elected people, we are sitting up here to make the hard decisions and people elected us to vote in their stead. So, bringing it back to us, knowing very well that each one of us is up here doing this as, to give back. I don't care about the money that I make here. And knowing that in past, when there were council members who said, you know, they did want to raise it up, it got vetoed. The mayor was able to say, you know what? Nope, that's not how it should go. And she was able to veto it. So, I feel that there are enough people up here elected by the constituents to trust us to make that hard decision. And I don't, I don't worry about any one of us saying that there, it's a conflict of interest. I, I really just, I don't think that this commission has put forth, although I do appreciate their time in donating it, I, I, I think it should move back to us so that should it come up, I have no problem making any decisions and I know that the people up here wouldn't either.
If I may just do a follow-up, if everybody's done with that. Yeah, with my portion, I think that people are questioning me about the conflict of interest because of the, the only salary that's really been increased. And it, it maybe even look, makes the mayor look a little bit bad, which is no intent at all, I'm sure. But the raises have been for the mayor, the output's been like, let's look at Burlington, see what's, Mayor Sexton's getting, increase it to that level. Let's do a bonus, let's get a bonus into font seven in the spreadsheet. And people are coming back saying, what is going on here? And I, you know, I don't, I don't plan on even bringing the subject up. I think when it was brought up, it was brought up by Councilman Glenn Allen, and it's before I got in. And he was saying, hey, I, let's bring a vote to the table. I'm going to be off the, the council, but it'll be good for everybody else. And there was a promise that that would get done on tape. I promise I'll get that done. But it didn't get done. And then it was asked again and it didn't get done. And then came the idea of a Salary Commission, which sounded like a really good idea. And so, I think we were all excited about that. But what I'm, what I'm getting is, it's not making sense to me what, what's going on there. And so, I think the, originally, like a year ago, I proposed, let's dump this thing and just go on about our life and do what we do, you know? If a council, future council wants to bring something up, mayor has approval to veto and they have approval to, to vote on it or bring in another Salary Commission that, that'll bring data, that'll bring hard facts, not, not give me a call. And I like the people on here. There's nothing about that. And I like the choices you've made. But they're calling me saying, hey, do you even want it? And then coming up to say, well, people donate money, so they don't need a raise or increase. That's not the way you do a Salary Commission. You do it by brass tacks. Here's the facts, here's what the other levels, we would expect that from, and you guys do a very good job on that, on getting bids from various contractors, consultants, things like that. There's, you know, there's no willing and dealing involved. So, that's my, my take on it and that's why I'd like to do that.
And since Councilmember Levaca brought it up, all of those things have been brought up to my, to me as well, from various constituents, in the sense that it's mayor-appointed, however, a, I've had several people approach me and want to know, well, who, who puts these people on the, the commission? And then, oh, well, there was a bonus given to an elected official, but that was appointed. And so, I don't think it's by any, any like intent for it to happen, but the optics of it don't look good to the community when they're coming back and asking those questions and wondering why that's happening. So, I also have been asked those questions. And so, I struggle with that. I also, and disclosed before, received phone calls as well. Well, what do you do with the money? Well, quite honestly, it was personal, I mean, that's my personal finances, but in all reality, I don't rely on it for anything, you know? I do this as a civil service and put my time into it because I believe it's the right thing to do for the community, so long as the community is willing to have me. But that doesn't mean that other people see things differently or felt differently in that. Obviously, that's why we're here where we are today. But I, I don't feel like it was handled properly in the past by having, you know, phone calls asking me, well, what do you do with it and do you want it? You know, I, I, I just, the parameters in which it's been, it's running could create issue and it's creating optics to the community that don't look very well either, from what's been the feedback I've received.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Mayor, if I could weigh in procedurally, procedurally, we can't amend the municipal code by a motion. So, if you could vote down the motion that you made and someone else, if there is interest in amending the municipal code, make a motion to bring back an ordinance repealing chapter 2.41 of the municipal code.
Okay. Do they have to vote it down or can they just pull it back? Just table it? Well, not table it, but.
I think it's been seconded, so we'd have to vote it.
It's been seconded.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Madam Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
I think we brought this up last time, the Salary Commission conversation came up and I just wanted to make sure the council was clear. We do provide the commission data. So, we provided them the budget as well as what we do with any position is comps for other cities, just comparing ours. So, we do provide that data to the Salary Commission and that's available on our website. All that information is there. So, just wanted to provide that information. I think last time the council had input about, like, don't they want our input on it? And we had discussed that maybe that formally wasn't the best way. So, one of the committee or the commission members had reached out to council to try and glean that input. So, just wanted to provide a reminder of the context, context of the last Salary Commission. They meet once a year, so there's not data coming out throughout the year. They meet once a year for the next year. So, they would meet in 2024 for the 2025 compensation. So, there wouldn't, there wouldn't be a rolling information or meetings coming out from that commission. So, just wanted to make sure all the facts were clear.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, I came to a council meeting about five years ago and it was actually a well-attended one with, with a council that I don't think anybody here was on at the time. And they were voting to give themselves like an 80% pay raise. And I remember you vetoed it, Mayor. And one of the things that I did understand about that meeting was that all of the people who were voting for that pay increase were not they themselves getting it until they ran for reelection to receive such compensation. When the Salary Commission, if, if they make a decision like to increase councils' pay to whatever Burlington or Mount Vernon makes, I think Burlington makes like 800 a month. So, they're a little bit ahead of us, but again, it's not really the point. The, the point is, if the Salary Commission made that decision, when would, when would those, when would that increase be put into play? Would it be put into play right after they made their decision or would I have to run for reelection to get that additional money?
It is for, we do it for the next year. So, the memo that the commission would approve would say, for example, the below is the salary for the council and mayor for fiscal year 2025. So, it would go into a place, in place the first of the next year.
Okay. Because I. Because I, I do agree with Councilman Burns and Councilman Cock that, that being in charge of giving yourself a pay raise is a conflict of interest. I, I also believe, though, that having unelected members on a commission to decide how to spend city funds is not their job. That's, that's the council's job. Now, being as it is, to where if we ever, and I don't ever see this happening with anybody sitting up here, deciding to give ourselves a pay raise, we'd have to run for reelection to get that money. But at the same time, we'd have a commission of five, I believe it's five, deciding essentially what our budget's gonna be for the next year. So say they decided to increase that, and our legislative budget goes from, I think it's like 46,000 or something like that, somewhere in there, right around 40 something, and it goes up to 80. Well, how are we gonna find that money? Right? Well, I guess we gotta increase property taxes now by the 1% to be able to pay ourselves what these people are saying we have to get paid now. Right? So, so that, it, it's a double-edged sword, I guess. I'd be more inclined to have the people that the taxpayers want representing them voting on things like this. And, and I'll, I'll be quite frank with you, I was absolutely appalled when they decided to give themselves an 80% pay raise. And when I got shot down and vetoed, I thought that was the awesomest thing ever. Because it, it was just appalling to see that kind of abuse of elected power happening. So kudos to you, Mayor, for doing that. But I, I think that this ball needs to be in our court for, for transparency's sake.
Yeah, I will say, though, it is the citizens, that they are citizens of Sejuweli. So, and last year, I don't think there was any increase last year, not even a cost of living, as I recall. I can't remember, I don't think so.
There was a, there was a memo for a, for the mayor position to increase, I think, by the CPI, because the, the previous memo had been for two years. But the commission met again and reversed that decision. So the, I believe it was, it was zero. But I'd have to go back and look, that there were no increases in the mayor or council's wages. Historically, there's been very zero to no changes, or to minimal changes in any elected official's pay for several years. Just the bonus.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, historically, it was about 2% to 3% a year for a mayor increase over, over the time up until we got a salary commission in place. And then it was automatic double-digit jumps that were being approved. And I, I for one threw up a stink about it, because it was like, it made no sense. Statistically or logically, even though you don't get paid enough, whoever's sitting in that, respect the office and the seat, this person's making 35,000 for what you do? It's pennies, it's not nearly enough. But still, nevertheless, you're seeing double-digits increases for one person. They reversed, but there was a lot of hassle that caused that to re-reverse. The bonus went into play relatively soon as well, so it wasn't a full year that had to go by for those activities to take shape. The other thing, from my understanding, the salary commission, Nikki could touch on this, could make a raise of any kind, and then that would pretty much, we don't have to run again to get that raise, it just goes into the next 2025, 2026, whatever year-end budget that is. So there's not a reelection-type scenario for that. They, they could, you know, if we wanted to revisit this in a couple of years and say, okay, here's what this is, let's rewrite this up, let's get this down, or do a workshop on it, that would be good. But right now, as it is, I think we talked about it, and we were gonna say, hey, let's see how this improves or what comes about. Nothing really came about too much. So that's just my opinion, that's where I've stood. Yeah, and I don't foresee us putting that, asking anybody to put a salary increase before the council for ourselves or anybody else, I mean...
Councilman Cock?
Yeah, I'm just getting back to the whole issue of perception, allowing elected officials, even in the, in the future, to set their salaries on the premise that, oh, they might, they have to get reelected. That's a weak argument, because, you know, I think to the public, and I've seen this as a journalist, elected officials raising their salaries, and the perception is, is that it's corrupt. And I'm just strongly opposed to not having an independent body.
Okay. So if you want to move forward with make, or getting a motion into play, or actually it would be an ordinance, I guess, that we would do, put in an ordinance into play that would disband the salary commission? The motion that's currently on the table, you need to vote down, and that is a motion to disband the salary commission. Is that correct, Nikki? Do I have that right? Am I stating that correctly into the record?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct. They would need to vote it down and then do a subsequent motion to bring forward an ordinance to repeal chapter 2.41 of the municipal code.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Yes. If the, if the salary commission were to be staying, but we were to adjust the parameters in which the, that managed itself, so that they, it didn't, salaries or none of that was affected until the next election running and wasn't immediate, you know, is, is that something that is, would make sense? Because to me, one of the things that I really struggle with in regards to salary commission is making that decision, and then, you know, so it's the end of the year, and it's like, okay, we're doing budgets, and, and Councilmember Henderson's completely right, that, that may not even be in a budget, but all of a sudden, we have a party making decisions that are not there. But we have to plan ahead for that, so wouldn't it make, I mean, it would make more sense to me that if there is a salary commission to safeguard the elected officials in that, because I do believe in the perception of it all, and I do believe that, you know, we can all stand, sit here and say that we would never do that stuff, and, and wholeheartedly, I believe that. But we are not who could be sitting in our seats in the future. So, so we, we juggle with that. But we could create another safeguard in the policy in that any sort of increases would then take effect in the next elected, in, in the next term cycle, rather than being immediate as, you know, and be able to create, you know, I, I personally don't believe that it's ethically right for any elected official to be provided a bonus, because it's, it's taxpayers' dollars, and those are coming from somewhere, and you're, you're, you're in your position, because you were elected based on the parameters in which it was provided. And I, I don't think that people would, you know, the majority of the community would say, here's my money, I mean, here you go. And so I, I just, I personally don't agree with that, but that's my personal opinion and where I view it from an ethical standpoint. So I just didn't know if, if there were additional parameters on the, on the council or the commission itself.
Nikki, I think that's a good question for Nikki. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. The answer to, the short answer to that is no, because salary commissions are actually a, a creature of state law. So it's, they are found in RCW 4, or 3521015, and the requirements and how they function are actually spelled out in that code provision. So salaries increases, they are not subject to council approval, they are effective regardless of the terms of office, they're effective when the salary commission says that they're effective. The, the check and balance here that citizens have is that they are subject to referendum. So if somebody in the public doesn't like the, the salaries that are set by the commission, they can file a referendum petition, and the same way that you, you could with a, with an ordinance in a town that's subject to a petition or referendum. So the reality is, is that they're, they're guided by state law, we can't further constrain them, but again, the check here is that they are subject to referendum.
I also think it's worth noting that the council is on staggered term, terms, so that might get tricky, you know, if one council member was making more than another council member. I'm not sure how, how we would do that. I mean, that might also be a Nikki question, but just something to consider as well.
I believe what Nikki just said is that would be illegal. From my understanding, we have no contact with the salary commission anyways. So we couldn't say, set a, set an alternating, wait till we elect. It's the parameters that are set forth by the RCW, so...
I, I think what Kelly's saying is that if the council takes back the right to set their own salaries, this council does not get to benefit, like, say you set your own, you set the, the salaries, no one on this council could benefit from that increase. And so you would have, I think you have four positions up next year, if you were to increase salaries, you'd have four people that would get an increase, but three of you would not get an increase. And so you'd have, you'd have different council members making different amounts of money if you took back that authority.
Yeah, but that's going on all over this state, and it doesn't seem to be a problem. So Nick's off next year, and whoever takes his place could be making more money than me. That's just the way it goes, and that's the way it is around the whole state.
Yeah, we only recently formed a salary commission. It's always been within the council or elected, and so I, you know, it's, it's not something that's new, it's not something we're doing. We tried the salary commission out for a few years, quite a few years, gave it even a second chance after probably seeing a lot of real concerns that we were getting and that we had, so...
Okay. So I guess we'll just move forward with this, that's the way it sounds, it doesn't sound like we're gonna do anything that's a little different. So the, if you want to put forth an ordinance to disband the salary commission, you need to vote down this motion, which was put forth by Lavaca and seconded by Kestie, and it's a motion to disband the salary commission. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, because we have to disband it, right?
You have to vote no to disband it.
Oh, no, no, got you. Okay, sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Take back.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So Nikki, give me the RCW again, it's 35...
So we're not, we're not in the RCWs for now, we're in the municipal code, so you're gonna want to make a motion to...
So the municipal code 2.41.005, okay.
And I'll make a motion to bring an ordinance or to remove the, the chapter municipal code 2.41.005 on the salary commission.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just for my minutes, I'm a little bit confused about who voted, sorry, I, I messed that up. Or you didn't vote?
I think they all were opposed, is that correct?
Yeah, we all voted it down. Everyone said no, or everyone, we had...
Everybody give a show of hands of who was opposed to the last motion.
Okay.
So that motion was voted down, and now we're making a new motion for the repealing chapter 2.41.005 in the municipal code.
I'll second that. Okay. Okay. So we have on the table now a motion to repeal municipal code 2.41.005. Motion made by Lavaca, seconded by Kestie, and is that, okay, I guess I'm a little confused, is that an ordinance we need to bring forward, Nikki? Or is it just a motion to repeal the municipal code?
No, it's, it's an ordinance that we're going to bring forward at the next meeting.
Okay. So the motion to bring an ordinance forward that will repeal Sejuweli Municipal Code 2.41.005. Okay. All those in favor of that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Those in opposition were Councilman Burns and Councilman Cock. Okay.
2.41.005.
Opposed. All right. Okay, so I think that's our agenda. We are moving now into executive session. Yes. Five minutes, okay. And it is pending litigation, it's RCW 42301101I. Okay, so it is 9:43, so we'll be back at 9:48. Okay.
Oh, did I just crack, 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 crack?
Mine or me or yours?
Me. I just barely...
I think we all lost the bet.
Yeah.
Who? What'd he say?
I lived there for long enough.
I remember that.
Okay.
Oh, we're, we're still going. We're still going.
What is the closest?
Oh, okay. I had, I had 9:20, and what he had 9:30. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, he bid, he bid 100.